We'll call the meeting to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall. Be sure and read that if you think you need to. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All right, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to say welcome to everyone and a reminder to all that this meeting is being recorded. It'll be broadcast at a later date. Remember that whoever wants to speak should be sure to come forward when you're recognized. We want you to be at the microphone. Give us your name for the record and spell it for the clerk, which assists her in her minutes. Remember no swearing or other inappropriate language. We all need to check our cell phones, try and turn them off or to silent if you would. Want to remind the commissioners that we also need to speak clearly in to the microphone, speak loud and directly. Again, with the recording, it's frustrating if we're not picking up the comments from the commissioners. Depending on how long the meeting lasts, we'll plan to take a short eight-minute break or so midway through the meeting. And I think that's it. The next item is to approve the agenda and consider any modifications. I have been asked this evening to move up an item on, the first item on the back page, which is the fire department records and software purchase. We have some of the fire people that need to be at a different meeting a little bit earlier than what they think it's going to come up on the agenda, and they've asked if it could be moved to the first item under the general agenda items. I'd ask if any of the commissioners have any problem with that?
No.
All right, then we'll plan on doing that and include that in our motion here. Any other agenda modifications that anyone knows about? All right, could we have a motion to approve the agenda with that one modification?
I move that we approve the agenda with the moving of the fire department records software purchase to the first item on the general agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? We'll go ahead and vote.
Hang on.
Okay.
I was trying to make that change and I still haven't read it yet.
Oh.
Go ahead.
We can vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get all of them?
Yeah, it's just not working. You have five yeses.
All right, then.
It wouldn't go to the vote.
Okay, motions carried. So we adopted the agenda with that change. We also want to mention that the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. We do have at the end of the agenda tonight, an executive session to discuss pending litigation and want you to be aware of that, but we also reserve the right to go into executive session for other reasons if appropriate on any of the other agenda items. The next item is the consent agenda. These items are planned to be approved by one action unless someone wants one of these to be considered separately. And I'd ask the commissioners if they would like to approve it or pull something off.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried. We'll move on to the next item, which is building and zoning. Mr. Mabon's here. Let me say that this is a public hearing. We're here to discuss and consider Robert and Renee Ford Tillman Infrastructure Conditional Use Permit, request for a cell tower located in section twelve, township twenty-two north, range fifty-seven west. Bill?
So they're requesting, it's a brand-new cell tower. It's about four miles south of Moore, kind of up in the hills a little bit. There's some bad coverage if you go to the southwest of that location around Bald Peak over there, South Moore Road. So they're just requesting a conditional use permit as required by the zoning regulations at this location. The planning commission did hear this at the last meeting, made recommendation for approval by a six-to-zero vote, along with the proposed permitted conditions. And you want me to just breeze through these a little bit? You have them in the packets there. So we got items one through seven. These are very general. We have them in almost all of our conditions, our conditions of approval for all permits. I'll just, I'll just brief through it a little bit. One is the operator must comply with federal, state, local laws. Two, operator must obtain all same permits, said permits. So there'll be some federal, state, and even a couple of local ones. Number three, just saying, hey, this is for a cell tower and any pertinent structures and other equipment that might, they'll end up putting other equipment on the tower. Number four, applies only for the scope as shown on page two. So if you flip over, that's their lease agreement is on that platted page right there. So we're just saying if you get outside of that scope, then you're probably going to have to come back to the board, ask for approval again if you want to expand on that a little bit. Number five, a zoning permit's going to be required before they get started on it. That's just to check out the floodplain stuff, any airport requirements. So we're just doing local permits with that one. Number six, we want the owner and the operator to enter into an agreement for the removal of their equipment and the restoration of the property to be completed within six months. So they'll have to submit that to us before we'll approve that zoning permit in item five. And then as usual, in item seven, when in compliance with all of these others, the permit shall be transferred to all owners. If they were going to maybe transmit it to their successors, could be their, their family, or even if they want to sell it, it just transfers this permit right here. I know there's a guy from Tillman Infrastructure here. If anybody has questions on the actual site or anything like that.
Bill, how many acres are you taking up here? I'm not seeing it in here.
Well, it's like, you're talking about a five-hundred-foot by five-hundred-foot box.
That's what it is.
Yeah. That's, in that lease, if you see that little, looks like a tripod on that plan page there, that's all it is. It's very small.
Just that box inside that tripod?
Yeah, exactly.
What about an easement going to the road? Or is it just a box?
That, that'll be included in it, yeah.
Okay, so it's bigger now. How many acres are we talking about?
I don't have an exact number of acres on it.
Those are things that we should know here.
Why, it's just a lease for it. They're not actually subdividing it off or anything. It's just a lease.
But it's still the defers.
He might have that for you, because it never came up in the planning commission or anything.
Why are we concerned about how many, how many rooms it's going to be?
You want to approve the farm or just a couple acres?
It's private property.
I realize that.
Well, we're, all we have is whatever's on this sheet right here. That's all we're asking for. That's our scope, nothing else.
Is it five-hundred by five-hundred plus access to it?
Well, whatever's on this right here, it actually shows what's in the lease is on that little, it actually shows that as the lease.
I think we have it and the dimensions are probably on there, but we can't.
You can't read it.
Right.
There's nothing you can read here.
No, I sent all those over separately, I think last week.
I didn't find any acres on that at that point either.
They may be defined and they're, like I said, it didn't really come up because they were just, were using the sheet here to define the actual boundaries of it.
Will the zoning change on, on that plat?
No, it's just a conditional use in ag zoning.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
No property changes hands, it's just a lease.
It's still going to be, it's still going to be zoned as.
Yeah, if I go, it's just pasture ground all the way around it.
And assessed at the same value as it's today.
Sure.
Is there, I want to be sure and mention again that this is a public hearing and we're certainly going to let the public comment on things. Is there anyone here that knows the exact square footage or the size of the? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. Ryan Streff with Powder River Development, again on, here on behalf of Tillman Infrastructure and the Ford family. You know, I know that you're looking for a specific number, but I, I'm going to give you a generalized number because I haven't calculated this particular site. Typically with the three-hundred to four-hundred-foot tower, guide tower, if you connect the guide wires and kind of make a triangle underneath that tower along with this access, typically there's anywhere from two and a half to three acres that's underneath that tower, right? I mean, you're not necessarily making a box, but you're going to kind of make a triangle around that tower and that's the area that's going to be used. The area that's going to be leased from Tillman is the hundred-by-hundred lease area that's directly underneath the tower, centered. The other items, the guide wires and the access road, is part of the easement that is obtained from the landowner.
The roads, an easement, not part of the lease technically?
Yeah, it's, it's within the lease saying that Tillman has rights to the, those particular easements and as they're shown on the construction drawings. But like, the road is for access and utilities and the others are for the guide wire placement.
Okay. All right. Does that answer?
All except the roads coming in, I don't know. That, I guess that's all right with me. You're, you're four hundred feet off the road, is that where you're at?
From the County Road H, which is to the north, where the tower is three hundred and twenty-four feet approximately.
From the road.
From the road, that's right.
So half of that, five hundred be two fifty and the balance would be from the road to the, to the county road, or from the, chain link fence to the county road.
So from the chain link fence, so there would be, well, again, if, if they were to fence the whole hundred-by-hundred, which they're not, they're only going to be fencing sixty by sixty feet of that. Now, in the future, they could expand, you know, that particular lease area and their compound, which in that case, when things are expanded, they're going to come revisit any zoning and permitting type items they might have to address.
But you are leasing thirty, what, three-point-two acres?
Nope, so there, the lease is going to be the hundred-by-hundred area, directly underneath the tower.
The three-point-two acres is what they want in this CUP.
Okay, so when you were saying how much room is this tower taking up, right? That's why I'm saying if you were, that has three guide wires.
I understand.
And, and I don't know, if you wanted me to show you the map here.
I can see it on the map, I see it.
So if you just draw a line between all of those, that's where I'm saying it's approximately two and a half to three acres. That's kind of encompasses the entire site. However, not all of that area has anything, doesn't all have items that are used for the, the tower itself, because whomever is farming that land, you can kind of farm in between those guide wires, you know, but I was just trying to give a generalized area of that.
See, well, I've got several answers. How many acres are in this conditional use permit? How many acres are applied for?
It does not say.
It doesn't say.
I do, don't have it on there. It goes to the height of the tower.
Why would we, why would we issue something? We don't know how many acres we're issuing.
It's on private property.
I agree. How many acres, so how many acres are we taking? Don't you need to know how many acres it is, Robert, to, so you can figure the tax on that thing?
It's not going to change according to.
So I don't believe that.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioners, I don't believe the requirement of the county is to subdivide or replat this, right? And because it's not being done, it is just that use of the conditional use permit on this property. Now, i- if we want to get, you know, a defined measurement, which is the hundred-by-hundred, right? And then each guide wire easement area that goes, so there's three of them, right? And then also the accessing utility, we can, you know, our CAD department can easily come up with that number and add that as a condition to say, this is the area that the tower will be taking up. So I don't think that's any issue, but again, it's going to be much less than my two and a half to three acres, because I was giving a, as you connect the dots.
Well, let's just say in, in the future, something else comes around that and they increase it. We don't, at this point, know how many acres that we're, we're granting. I don't have a clue. We're just saying.
Again, Russ, what?
Well, if they come out later and they want to put in a housing development, how many acres are in this conditional use? And how many are you going to be able to sell?
That'll be addressed at the time that they're going to do whatever it is.
Can't, because we don't even know right now how many acres it is. We have no idea.
But it's still on private property. It doesn't matter.
Still on private property. But, but we're, we're issuing a permit on something that we don't even know the amount of acres. I, I don't know what's the use of even issuing it. Tell me, tell me, if we're going to issue something that we have no idea how big or how small it is, why would we issue it?
If it were on county, I could understand. Private property, that's between.
But I mean, why don't we just let them do whatever they want to do and not even, why are we messing with it if they're going to?
We have a, we have a tower on private property in the Wildcats and the land still is used for what the original intent was, because it's grazing. And so it really has no effect on the land or the neighbors around them, because the actual area under the tower is very small and the cattle graze under the guide wire. So it's really, it's not, not really a big deal at all.
You mentioned, you mentioned like a housing development or our requirements on the, on the, the height of the tower. If it falls down, it has to be away from, you know, whatever's at all.
So wouldn't that make sense that, follow what you're saying, that those, that's conditional use would be three hundred by three hundred by three hundred, wherever this thing can fall, however far, how far it can fall.
But that, that would be a separate, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, if a housing development goes in, you can't put a house.
But he don't know how big this conditional use is, so how far are you going to stay away?
I mean, we could take it to the, the planning, sorry, the mapping department. They could plug it right into their computer and it'd give us a little shootout, but it's, there's nothing in there that's going to allow anybody to go and put a separate.
Okay, but is Mike, is the conditional use permit inside of that fence you're showing here, that fence area? Is it outside of the fence?
Exactly what the location of that map is, that plat that they submitted.
That's what I'm looking at. I looked at that map. I see a fenced-in area.
It's surveyed out, so it actually used the corners and they got the distances and their angles and everything, so it's essentially a survey.
Is it sixty by sixty, a hundred by hundred, or five hundred by five? How, how big is it?
It's multiple angles and distances, not just a box necessarily. If you were able to see it up close, you'd see where it showed the lease line.
Let me ask this.
It's private property, so I'm sure.
Let me ask this question. This information someone said is the lease, is that what I'm understanding?
That's like a plat.
Okay, and there's a legal description here, the way I'm seeing it?
Commissioner?
I can't see it, but.
So there is a survey on this property and so all of the, the easements and the lease areas are all called out and they have specific.
Dimensions.
Dimensions, you know, meets and bounds descriptions and feet required, which are shown on the drawings, which in the zoning permit, when these drawings go, that's what's going to be permitted, is what's in the drawing and which is the drawing right here.
So we're going to approve that according to the drawing and we're not going to worry about acres?
Typically, it's.
That's fine, I mean, I just want to know how we're doing it. So I'm okay either way, just, just so we know what we're doing here. I have no idea.
I have that plat on record.
Okay, if you have that on record.
So if you approve it, then that is what you are approving is that plat that is on page two right there.
Okay, well, what I'm looking on page two.
It is described by meets and bounds all the way around.
What I see here, you couldn't follow them, you can't read it, you couldn't follow.
I just, I just made a little printout for you guys. I, I did include it as an attachment on the email, so you could zoom in on that.
Anyway, I'm, go ahead.
My name is Rob Ford, I'm a property owner. The actual lease is just for the square footage under the tower and then the square footage underneath the three braces. That's, that's the actual area. And I've, I've figured up that square feet and I don't remember, but it's less than, it's like two acres.
But it ties, everything ties together, so everything, those three guy, anchor points are all.
Yeah.
Considered in and so is the flow going back to the center point.
And, you know, it's, it's just CRP ground.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the road and then, like, I don't even have to fence them out of that. They could, they could graze between the towers and whatever if they wanted to.
Well, I was basically asking a simple question, is how many acres included in it? And when you're issuing something like this and you don't even know how many acres it is, that concerns you just a little bit.
It's less than, it's less than three.
Rob, if you decide to do something later down, put a building up, put a housing development, is that going to affect it? What, what you're asking for tonight?
Uh, no, no, I mean, you wouldn't.
You'd stay away from that area.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
You would follow whatever guidelines are necessary for the, for, first of all, the height of the tower?
Correct.
And, and then whatever easement is and then what is approved here.
Correct. But your answer is it's less than three acres.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That's why I just, I was asking, basically I was asking how many acres were included?
We, we certainly have a scale drawing with dimensions, but we don't have the large copy of the drawing here in front of us tonight. But certainly we have a location map that's got some dimensions on it here if we were able to blow it up. And I'm looking on the computer, not, I might be able to blow it up easier than. But in any event, I think we, this gives us the perspective of how big it is, I guess, in comparison to, to the property. Okay? Go ahead.
Rick Derr, D-E-R-R. Commissioner Reisig kind of touched on the tax assessment. In a tower, and you have the assessor here, so he can obviously trump what I'm saying. I don't know if I have the good fortune or misfortune, I think we own about thirty-five towers. But when you lease a piece of property, then you build a, a tower on it, that becomes personal property and, and we pay taxes on that personal property. So I would assume that when the cell company builds the tower, then the assessor will assess the equipment as personal property.
To, to, to the cell company, not the property owner.
That's right, that's right.
That's correct.
So, Robert, the county assessor's agreeing with that. Okay? So let me just say this is a public hearing and if there's anyone here that wants to speak on this item, we would invite you to come forward and, and speak, whether it's yea or nay, to this project. Not seeing or hearing others? We'll go to any comments from commissioners? And I have one question, I, I already know the answer, but, so the planning commission did look at this and approved it unanimously with those conditions that we have, those seven.
That was the recommended conditions.
Right, seven conditions. Okay? Russ or anyone else?
I've had everything I need to say on.
Well, it's going to be a great benefit to not only our public, but traveling public, because that's one of the areas that, in Nebraska, we're trying to address is communication and information for everybody, even the rural communities. So I think this would be a great asset to help promote that communication, because we have a lot of areas in western Nebraska where cell service is kind of limited and by putting up more towers, that's going to benefit those rural people, so I think it's a great idea.
I'm not having any problem with it. I'm assuming that we've done this the same or in a similar fashion on many cell tower locations throughout the county in the past. And as far as I know, we haven't had any issues with that. Any other comments? All right, if not, I'm going to officially close the public hearing and.
I would move for approval.
I'll second.
Proposed cell tower location.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the, the conditional use permit request for the cell tower. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
I need my.
What's that?
Mine didn't come in yet.
There we go.
There, sorry.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried. All right. Later, okay. Okay, so the next item is Board of Equalization and we'll need a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
I move we go into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, go into Board of Equalization, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses?
Okay, motion's approved. The first item is discuss and consider proposal to settle Turk cases, twenty-one C zero-one-nine-one, twenty-two C zero-two-one-six, twenty-three C zero-two-two-eight for twenty-six seventeen Property Interest LLC, the old Aurora building.
That's correct.
Mr. Robert, go ahead.
That's correct. And just for reference, the twenty-six seventeen properties, that's a subsidiary corporation of SWBC, so we could just refer to them as SWBC if you would like.
Okay.
Okay, so I, about a week ago, I received a phone call from a gentleman named Tim Parma representing SWBC. And there are, there are these three active Turk cases for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three. Twenty, in twenty-twenty-four, it's a, it's an exempt property because it was sold to Scottsbluff School District on December thirteenth of twenty-three. So for the course of those three years, the taxable valuation on the property was approximately ten-point-six million dollars for each year. It stayed static for three years. And that was based off of the, the most recent commercial appraisal that was done on the property, as well as at that time, the most recent sale of ten million, seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars when Nation Star sold that property to SWBC. Okay, so that's how that was established. Daryl Standard, I believe, was the one who did the last commercial appraisal for us. So the verbal offer that Tim Parma provided, he said he'd be willing to reduce this to writing for the board's consideration in the county attorney's office to take a look at, is that, that they want to settle for a valuation of six million dollars for twenty-twenty-one, six million dollars for twenty-twenty-two, and one-point-five million dollars for twenty-twenty-three. I did some calculations just back of the envelope, estimations. If the board were to accept this proposal, that would basically reduce or, or have a decrease in estimated taxes by over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. My recommendation, of course, you don't have to make a decision tonight, you can if you want, but the purpose of this is for you to consider it, but my recommendation is to not accept the, the proposal and to let it go to Turk, that would be, and myself and the county attorney's office would rep, represent the Board of Equalization at that hearing, which is currently not scheduled.
The one-point-five, is that what the school paid for?
Exactly. They paid, the school paid one-point-five million dollars. That transaction was on December thirteenth of twenty-three. The prior sale was in two thousand and fourteen. The prior sale was in two thousand fourteen for ten point seven five million dollars.
It was a prior sale, Robert?
In two thousand fourteen. It was a little, it was ten point seven five million. So that's the information, you know, uh, the representative of SWBC asked me to present that, see if there's an interest. I clearly don't think it's in our best interest, but that's not my decision, that's the board's decision. Since board is the one that's, that is being challenged here, uh, by, in the Turk, uh, case.
So, just to clarify, the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three taxes have been paid?
Correct.
And so if we were to accept this proposal, a refund from the county would have to be made?
Would, yeah, it would be proportionate with all of the taxing authorities.
So the county would make a refund, the schools would make a refund?
School would, uh, yeah, oddly enough, it'd be have the largest refund. Yeah.
Refund to come up with.
Right.
You know, I've been on the board six years now, and I've never, I've never had a, uh, Turk, uh, proposal to settle.
The proposal's from SWBC, not from Turk.
Right.
Just to be clear, okay?
It's a Turk case, proposed to be settled by SWBC, this is the first time.
Yeah, I don't think, I've, I don't think
Yeah.
I've ever had one where they ended up coming to us, instead of just continuing their process through Turk.
Right.
They're coming to us, hoping to settle because of the one point five million dollar sale.
That's right, that's right.
And that's why they're doing it.
And to avoid, you know, additional attorney fees and costs and travel costs to attend a hearing, uh, wherever that may be. I don't think it's in the best interest for the board to do that. And I presented it specifically to the board, because it is the board that's involved in this case. Uh, I think in years past, many times, the, uh, the assessor would, would actually, um, uh, approve or deny that this type of thing. I didn't find it appropriate, uh, since the assessor's office is not named in this case.
I'll make a motion to deny the proposal.
Is that your request, Robert, what you'd like to see?
It is, that's my recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Well, I would only say that again, it's, it's not just the county, um, that's gonna end up paying money back. It's all of the other entities.
Not only that.
And I'm not willing to do that.
Not only that, we'd have to reimburse the taxpayer on that as well. We taxed them for that, that was part of our levy. Those, those numbers are part of the levy.
We taxed them on it, they paid the taxes.
They did, and if we reimburse that money, we gotta give that back to the taxpayer.
Uh, I'm, I'm with, I, I'm with you, Mark, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the proper thing to do.
Yeah, I, I, that doesn't involve the assessor's office, so I can't really tell you about how that, if there is a refund back to the tax.
I don't know, I'm just saying it's logical.
Heather, can you answer that?
I don't understand.
It's, it's not a, it's not a
Paying on the taxpayer.
refund back to the taxpayer, but you'd be asked, ultimately, you'd be asking the taxpayer to make up some difference if, if what you're saying is true.
Then we wouldn't have a tax.
And ultimately...
Right, it, it, it ultimately affects the amount that, you know, we're collecting later on.
Right.
Um, but this is, this is an unusual case, but I, in my opinion, agree with the fact that letting Turk decide, because Turk could hold the value, Turk could lower the value. You know, I think it's probably better to let them be the decision maker, because then we have something to go off of, and it, it's more appropriate than if we just settle something that's kind of not really ours to settle.
That's your motion, Heather.
Yep, right. Alright, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to, um, not, um, to not, uh, grant their request to settle. So, um, if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses to deny the request.
Alright, so that motion is carried. Alright, so then we'll go on to the next item, discuss Turk decision on CW Yant Foundation.
That's correct, so this is informational. Uh, so, uh, CW Yant Foundation, the property tax commissioner and the property tax administrator, uh, brought this case against the Board of Equalization. And it's for the tax year twenty-twenty, so any subsequent years, it doesn't apply to. Uh, but for twenty-twenty, there are sixteen parcels involved in this foundation. And, um, uh, the decision, um, it's, it's a twelve, twelve-page long decision, and I can provide you a copy if you want to, but in essence, because the charitable organization is actually receiving, um, rents for the land, for the use of buildings and things of that, that they consider the primary use of that property to be something other than a charitable organization. Even though the vast majority of the funds do go to char, ultimately go to, uh, charitable organizations. So the decision's been made, I have until December twenty, twenty-fourth to put it back on the tax roll. At that point in time, the treasurer's office will issue a tax bill for all sixteen parcels to the foundation. And, um, that's pretty much it, estimated taxes on this. Haven't done the taxless corrections yet, but I will within the next couple of weeks. Uh, probably around forty-five thousand dollars in, in tax dollars, plus or minus.
Okay. And, uh, was the, uh, foundation notified of all of that when you were?
Uh, yes, actually, the county attorney's office was notified, as well as the foundation. So they're, they're fully aware.
So are there subsequent years that may come up? Because if they were, they were charitable in twenty-twenty, how did we, how did we treat them in twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three?
They were treated as charitable organizations, and there is a permissive, um, um, exemption granted by, by the assessor, and the, the assessor's recommendation, the board approved that. For this coming year, for twenty-twenty-five, uh, if we receive the request, which I kinda doubt that we will, now that the foundation knows that Turk has ruled on this, but at that point, I would, I would recommend going forward, unless something drastically changes in, in the way that they are funded, that the board, uh, deny a request for exemption going forward.
Based upon the Turk's
Turk's decision.
Uh, decision.
Yeah, if their business model doesn't change, there's, there's really nothing, nothing to discuss.
Right.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna, the way I'm seeing it, um, have the same issue of we didn't collect the taxes, Turk's saying we should have.
Mm-hmm, I'll do a taxless correction on all sixteen parcels. Tax bill will go out, so there's additional forty, again, this is an estimate, around forty-five thousand dollars in tax dollars that the foundation will owe.
And that's for the year of?
Twenty-twenty.
Of twenty-twenty.
Mm-hmm.
And so in that case, um, yeah, they would end up paying taxes. Which would then end up getting distributed to...
The taxing authorities.
Yeah.
Appropriate for that, for that property, right?
Do you foresee the property tax administrator taking us to court on the tw- twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three tax years?
Um, I have no indication, uh, that they are, or that they discussed it. I, I did discuss it with my exemption contact at the state to say, hey, what do I do? She says, well, you can only do, you can only do taxless corrections on twenty-twenty, the other year's stand. And at that time, she hadn't heard any, anything about, uh, those subsequent years being, uh, you know, a case being filed by Turk, or by the state, like, with Turk.
And...
So I think we let, let it lie for those three years. Uh, that's, that's
But from this point forward, you're saying that they would be taxable?
They would be taxable, that's right.
Based upon?
And if they do fill out a, a request for permissive exemption, I will present those separately with a recommendation to deny those due to this decision.
So in this case, Turk is basically, you, you used the term, I think, suing us in the county.
The state, state actually, is a tax commissioner, uh, Tony Fulton, the tax commissioner, and Ruth Sorenson at the time, property tax administrator, was the appellant versus, uh, Scottsbluff County Board of Equalization.
Okay, and then, but then, um, technically, we would then be assessing that back to the foundation? Is that what we're saying?
No, we would, we would assess it for, uh, uh, for twenty-twenty-five.
I understand.
But we would...
If that money's owed for, what was the year, twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty.
If that money's owed for twenty-twenty, then... Is that something then that we would be paying, meaning the county?
My, my direction from, from our exemption person at the state is to do nothing with, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, I understand, but what about twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty, that's the one I'm gonna do tax list correction on sixteen parcels, and it's gonna generate approximately another forty-five thousand dollars in tax revenue.
From the foundation?
From the foundation.
They would be paying for it, technically.
The treasurer will get that money through, through their billing process, and the treasurer will distribute that to the appropriate taxing authorities.
So the foundation would be paying for it, not the county?
That's right.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't understand your question, obviously, so...
Okay, I think I understand.
Would you explain again why there are no longer taxes?
Uh, basically, the, the funds that they're getting, there, there is a set of criteria that the state uses to look at permissive exemptions. And, and one of those is, is a primary use of that property. Primary use of the property is for agriculture, there are two oil wells, there's a couple of houses that are leased out. While the majority of those funds do go to the foundation and are given to multiple charity organizations, the state considers the primary use of that to be agriculture or residential, or rural residential. And, uh, it's a twelve-page decision, but boiling it down, that's really the, the reason. And I do have, uh, copies, if you guys would like to see a copy of the, of the case.
It's, it's similar to, to why we pay property tax on, on the keynote parlor.
Basically true.
Yeah.
It's a revenue generating.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, one of the few times I think it's okay to be sued, where it's actually the beneficiary of being sued.
Right. Alright, so, this is just informational, at this point.
That's right, it's gonna happen.
Right.
Uh, one other thing I would note is that after, uh, I do the taxless corrections, um, and I will have to send out a notice of valuation change, since it's going from exempt to non-exempt. The foundation will have thirty days to, um, to basically protest. They cannot protest the Turk decision. That property is now taxable. The only thing that they can protest is the valuation that we set on that property.
Okay.
But that's required by statute for me to do that.
So they already had their hearing with Turk?
That's right.
And they lost, apparently, so, alright.
Well, no, well, yeah, they lost, I guess, but it was Turk that brought the case.
Turk brought the case, right.
Against us, forgiving them the exemption.
Mm-hmm, right.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Okay, you can keep us up, updated on that, uh, if there's more information as we go?
Yes, um, like I said, I'll be doing the taxless corrections before the twenty-fourth, hopefully sooner rather than later. And I'll be able to drill down the exact number when we do those taxless corrections, so I can report back to the board what that actually, the dollar number is.
Very good, I think, uh, we're all sympathetic to their situation, but it was Turk that made the decision.
That's right.
Not us.
That's right.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So that was all for Board of Equalization, so do we have a motion to go out of Board of Equalization?
I move that we leave Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
So we can go ahead and vote?
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll move on to the next item, Road and Bridge, Steve Baird. First item is discuss and consider approval of a resolution of year-end certification of the county highway superintendent.
So it's coming on the end of the calendar year, and end dot, uh, always does in December, their year-end certification that the county had a licensed, uh, highway superintendent. So the resolution, uh, simply is allowing, the board certifies a resolution allowing the chairman's signature on the actual year-end certification form that gets filled out. So, um, this is the same thing's been done every year, past however many years. So, if you want me to read the resolution, I can.
Pass your test, please?
Yes, quite, quite a while ago. So, um, I can read the resolution if you want, it just simply states that the board is giving the chairperson the permission to sign the year-end certification, which is next on the certification.
No, because it's changed from last year.
No, no.
Alright, so, um, is everyone okay with not reading through the entire resolution?
Yes.
Alright, and so, are we doing two things here, it looks like?
Yes, we first need to approve the resol, the board needs to approve the resolution for you to sign the certification, and then we need to approve
I see.
the signing of the certification.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. So that approves the resolution. Now the, uh, item is to approve the chairman's signature to go on that year-end certification of county highway superintendent for twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the chairman's signature for the year-end certification of county highway superintendent.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
And by getting this done, this allows us to get our ten thousand five hundred dollar incentive money that they
To ten thousand five hundred dollar signature?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Good job, Mark.
Always been a good deal.
Were you my second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's all of assigning that one? Okay?
Thank you.
So this goes to Kelly, I'm assuming?
Yes.
I think so, on that one. Okay, so we're up to the general agenda items, and we're going to the item for discuss and consider fire department record software purchase. Tyler Rexus, Nathan Flowers, Ben Backus, and Mr. Shingle's here as well, so, whoever wants to start?
Alright, so, evening, gentlemen. Uh, basically what we're looking for here tonight is, uh, a motion from the board and approval of a purchase for the new, uh, reporting software used by all of the fire departments, where they take information from our CAD and, uh, their runtimes and all that, and they use it to submit to the state for all their requirements. The, uh, this is something that has been paid for, uh, traditionally out of the twenty-nine-ten fund. That is the, uh, collective fund that each community pays into for capital expenditures. The annual price was, uh, has been, for a long time, uh, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-four cents a year through, uh, ESO, uh, emergency reporting. And, basically, as, uh, Chief Flowers explained to me, and Chief Shingle, that, uh, they pretty much had, uh, had priced themselves, uh, out of competition, and they got bought up. And the software is end of life, and so, the new software has gone up considerably in price. And it is, oh, so now it's at forty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty annually, with a one-time fee of ninety-eight hundred for the initial installation. This has been supported by the nine-one advisory board to, uh, continue to pay for this, for the fire departments. Uh, but it was not actually passed as an agenda item, cause we could not get a quorum. And Chief Flowers had came to me and asked if we could just go ahead and go before you, the Board of Commissioners, uh, to approve to continue even pay for this software for the fire departments.
It's not been approved by the nine-one-one committee?
Everyone is in support of it, uh, when it was on the agenda for an action item, we just couldn't get a quorum.
Some background story, we, he, the chiefs had known about that this was changing for a while, and so the board tasked them with finding a, a solution they liked, because we didn't feel like we as a board knew what to pick for the fire departments. And, uh, we had sent him back a couple times with questions on things, so it's kind of, it kind of beat the horse to death already on the board, and we were just gonna approve it. And I contacted members of the board, and they were fine with approving the commissioners without a recommendation.
Is there anything in the bylaws of that committee that says that it has to be approved prior to coming to the commissioners for final approval? Even though you don't have a quorum, and I, I, I know that's a problem, that has been a problem for you.
And the reason why we're not just pushing it, I mean, typically, I mean, we didn't have a quorum last time, but December's probably our worst month for meeting a quorum for the board, and then that pushes to January, and it gets on your guys' schedule probably February, which I appreciate the commissioners, Mrs. Sides getting this in there in a short timeframe. Um, and it has to be done by February twenty-sixth, is that what I?
Tom Shingle, city discussed both. Um, yeah, this software is no longer gonna be supported as of January first. Uh, the United States Fire Administration has changed their reporting requirements, um, and are sunsetting the current system by January of twenty twenty-six. So we have about a year, but it takes about six months to get the software up and running, uh, transferring all the current data from all the fire departments over into the new system. It takes, it takes some time, so that's, that's why we're trying to push this along a little bit faster. But that, the current system all the departments are using is no longer supported, it will not meet the criteria for the, the United States Fire Administration, and therefore, uh, would not be able to submit, submit the reports to the national data, so. Uh, to, to answer your question a little bit about, uh, the bylaws on the nine-one-one board, um, all it says I, that I can recall in the, in the inter-local agreement is that any actions must have a, a quorum and an affirmative vote. So without a quorum, um, it doesn't say that it has to be voted on, that I can find.
Would the committee be opposed to changing that section of the bylaws to indicate?
Ken.
I'm sorry.
Can you move your, thank you.
To indicate that the quorum would consist of those attending the meeting? Uh, uh, a lot of people that are having problems are doing that sort of thing, and I know it's been an issue for you guys for quite some time.
We already adjusted it down.
Did you? Yeah.
And we, we had a long stretch, the county lost their rep though, and they don't have it. So we're, I mean, that's our core pretty much, is the county, um, Scotts Bluff, Gearing, uh, Morrell is kind of the core that's always there, so.
Right, right.
You know, and, uh, Mitchell's been pretty good about showing up now too, but like.
But if you change, if you change that to those attending, at least you can conduct business and keep things moving, because it, what you're doing is really important, and, you know, and because, for whatever reason, you still need to move forward.
We, we had talked about it, but I mean, we, so the board is, would be, it's controlling money from all the communities, so there's some fear about just Scotts Bluff, Gearing showing up.
Exactly. But they have the opportunity to show up and, and attend the meeting, that, that, that's the thing. So if you, if you guys make a decision and they're going, well, wait a minute, I don't like that, well, probably should have been there to say something about it, yeah, it's, because it's important.
Well, I mean, the core doesn't show up, I mean, and we probably would agree with you, but you know, the other ones.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, you know, I'm not saying that because this is a, every now and then, but it, it, from what I'm understanding, it's starting to become a problem, not getting a quorum, so you can conduct your business. Just a thought, that you can do whatever you want to with it, but there are organizations that do that for the same reason.
So, uh, a couple of things that I'm understanding, you didn't have a quorum, um, but you certainly had a consensus amongst the people that were there, and did I understand you to say that some others were contacted, um, and you got like verbal approval outside of the meeting?
Correct, I had talked to, I wasn't there, I, I was out of town, and Nathan was on fire call, so he couldn't make it, or something, we got two of your core that usually there that couldn't make it. And I talked to Mitchell and Morrell, who, I don't know if they were there or not, but they, they agreed that they were okay.
How many were you short on your quorum?
One or two.
Yeah, we were just, I think we were just going short.
Oh, man.
So, are you saying that our, our representative, um, was it, was that Ashley?
Like you, let it go, do it.
No, Tim.
Ashley and Tim, yeah, it was Tim, you're right, yeah.
Alright, so you're missing two from the county?
One.
And we need to appoint that, those people?
Yes, we need to appoint them.
Okay, so if it's our responsibility to appoint those, we're getting ready, um, we're gonna talk later in the agenda about, um, talking about positions for, um, our committees and whatever, but I think at the same time, which I hope will be as early as the next meeting, or the following one, that we'll get people appointed into those positions. Because like you said, we're, our people should be some of the easiest ones to attend the meeting, and we need to make sure we're filling those positions. I didn't realize that we were causing somewhat of an issue here.
I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus.
No, I know, but it needs to be, needs to be done.
I think it was just a, a timing issue, really, they, they had, uh, I think we were their-
Previous meeting?
The previous meeting, the October meeting, and it just, it was just a timing issue, it wasn't.
Right, and what do we call this, um, fund again, the nine?
It's the twenty-nine-ten.
Twenty-nine-ten, that's the money that comes from the nine-one-one assessment of fifty cents a line, or something like that, or fifty cents, however.
The twenty-nine-ten is actually, um, it, its contributions based on the population of each community.
Size of, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But that group has said that they're willing to do that, and that's what they want to do, and it's kind of their money, you just need our blessing with that. That be true?
Did this fund pay it before? The fourteen thousand seven sixty-five, it was?
And now it's gonna be this year fifty, fifty-four thousand, basically.
So in a way that'll work, when we do the, we give a figure to the, everybody participating when it's budget time, so obviously, it'll be split through the matrix, it seems like.
Based on population.
When's the first payment due, then? If you're signing it?
It's set in the documents, it was in November, but that's not gonna be until.
That's gone.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's gonna be this fiscal year, it isn't like a year from now.
Correct, it'll be within this fiscal year.
And there's enough in there to cover the increase.
Provided, yeah, it's just, we talked about the number, it's just a matter of, if there's other bills due, of which maybe Tyler knows. And we paid the majority of our subscriptions and such.
Yeah, I pay a little bit, uh, to Esri, um, but like EMD, that was a one-time thing, uh.
The big Motorola, that's out the door.
Yeah, Motorola and, uh, and the annual Central Square is.
The biggest one, we just need to write those down, okay.
And then, so you're apparently ex- expecting the ongoing fee to be based off of this forty-four eight, or whatever. It'll be probably-
Yeah, it says in the document, everything goes up every year, I mean, it had a notch to exceed five percent.
But that ninety-five hundred was a one-time fee. Alright, well, again, it's, it's, um, the community's representative on your board that's saying to go ahead, and ultimately, they'll be the ones that the budget will have to go up a little because of it, and, um, they'll be the ones affected.
These are the ones that weren't in attendance, is that correct? Or, or just the ones that were there?
They were there, I just called them to make sure they were okay with me going to the board and asking.
Okay, I got you, okay.
We have been discussing this for the last, uh, five, six, seven, eight months maybe, and every meeting, everyone has always shown support for it.
Yeah, haven't had any negatives.
We just, when it came to actually voting on it, we just didn't have a quorum.
And I just, the only reason I ask the question, we don't wanna go against what your bylaws say, that it has to be approved by yours before it comes to us. It appears that you have a consensus that everybody is in for, had, had you had a quorum, you would have, it would have been fine approved, okay. I would, I would move the, uh, approval of the purchase of the record software purchase.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and vote.
Wait, I think you got a comment back here.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Tyler, Tyler, can you have any?
My court, H O R T, uh, president of the Kiowa Rural Fire Projecting District. Um, I made this comment, uh, several months ago or years ago, when the county bought the new radio system. The nine-one-one commu- uh, meeting is in the middle of the afternoon. The only, the only people that can do that are people that are employed by the county or by the-
Government.
Government.
Yeah.
If you're out working in a, in a civil job, you can't do it. I would love to be on that committee, but I can't do it and leave my job, so I would recommend if you want a quorum, do it later in the evening.
Okay? So you guys can bring that up to the group. Okay? Alright, appreciate your comment. Still have a motion and a second on the floor?
I already started taking notes.
Good.
How about the remote?
So I know we've started voting, did, has everyone voted?
Mike's short, there you go, there it is.
You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried, so appreciate you being here. Alright, um, we're gonna go back on the agenda, and when we, um, we're gonna, the next item is discuss and consider approval of boundary changes for Kiowa and Lyman, Village of Lyman Fire. Um, Mike, you're here to present this item?
Yeah, my court again, H O R T. Um, the Village of Lyman has determined it was in their best interest to not do any funding or, uh, support the fire department, so, um, we have had an agreement, have signed an agreement, and we've had a joint resolution that was required by, uh, your attorney. We've got all that signed, everything's been signed, I've talked to Nathan, uh, about the nine, uh, MFO money and all that kind of stuff. Uh, I'm just here to ask the county to, uh, erase the little circle inside our district that encompasses the Village of Lyman, so we can, um, move forward with the annexation and, uh, take over and still provide fire, fire protection for that village.
Okay. Is anyone else here on this subject tonight? If not, um.
Has, has this changed since what you brought me, when you got put on the agenda, do you know?
Uh, as far as the contract?
Yeah, whatever, because whatever you brought me initially is what I gave to the board, I just wanted to know if it had changed yet, okay. So you guys did get everything, except for now it's signed, okay.
Alright, so, I thought that when we had talked about this a few weeks ago, Phil, weren't you involved with, um, the discussion here a little bit?
Yeah, I talked to attorneys, um, Mark Kavarek, and talked to the assessor at the end. I've talked to people about this.
Okay.
I talked to Mark Kavarek about it, and we, we discussed the fact that, that, uh, your inter-local looks fine. Merging, merging those fire districts, the Lyman will cease to exist, or cease to provide separate fire protection.
Exactly.
And so then, the property in the Village of Lyman will become part of your district for taxing.
Correct. Correct.
And I understand that won't happen until the twenty-five tax bills are sent out.
Correct. Correct.
And so, um, just requires you to adjust the district boundaries for Kiowa to include the village.
Right, and you, you had, you wanted the inter-local agreement, and I'm sure you got a copy, we do have that signed.
Yeah.
So Mike, did I understand you to say that, that the Village of Lyman is not going to participate financially?
That's correct.
But you're still going to provide protection, is that correct?
No.
Well, they will by the fact that when the boundaries are redrawn, they'll be taxed.
Correct. They will. The village landowners will provide financial support. The village itself will no longer, uh, collect tax for the fire department and disperse any tax money.
So the individual landowners will be reimbursing?
Yes.
Kiowa then?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be getting taxed, just like someone that's in your district now.
Exactly, with a point oh four mill levy.
And the agreement provided that Kiowa would become the owner of the fire hall in the Village of Lyman.
Correct.
And equipment or?
And, and equipment.
Yeah, so, instead of having a, a Village of Lyman Fire Protection District and a Kiowa, you're gonna have a Kiowa that'll cover all the area.
That's correct.
The net different, the net, uh, effect of that should be neutral.
Yeah, there shouldn't be issues that I-
Because the Village of Lyman residents would have had in their Village of Lyman tax bill some money for fire protection. Instead of that being in their budget for the village, it will now be a line item for Kiowa in their tax bill.
Correct. And it, it won't, it won't take, it won't take effect until the twenty-five, twenty-six tax year, budget year.
Do they unders- have you talked to all the village people yet?
They have their own attorney.
They have their own attorney, and they have-
They have their attorney that's representing them.
I asked, I asked the-
Just having it pointed out separately is gonna cause a stir, I was just wondering if you guys could get ahead of that, it might help you.
I, I have not, um, talked to, uh, I've talked to a couple people, I mean, I, I didn't go around knock on the doors.
Hopefully the village levy goes down or-
So the city will supply all the water to hydrants, they're gonna maintain the hydrants and do all the things.
Yes. Yes, they will maintain the hydrants and, and, uh, flow test them and do everything.
That's what I hadn't read.
There, there's that inter-local water agreement between Lyman, Henry, and Morrell, and that, so that whole system is combining that. We, we don't, we're not gonna take care of that, that's, you know, like replacing water mains and stuff like that, that isn't up to us. It's still be up to the village.
So, um, Phil, what are we, what are we approving tonight from our standpoint?
You're changing the boundary lines of the Kiowa district to include the land in the Village of Lyman.
Right.
And we don't have a specific resolution that says that, but it's based on these two? I mean, this fir- this, this first resolution in our packet is one that, um, the Village of Lyman, I think, adopted.
Well, they're-
Well, that's in your joint one, isn't it? Isn't that kind of sticking out a little bit?
I've received. So there, what, what he's saying is, we don't have a resolution for the county-
Oh, okay.
-board, so you need a resolution for the county board to, you can approve this, so that at the next meeting, you need a resolution for the county commissioners to approve and change the boundary.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask, um-
It's not gonna hurt any time-wise, it's not gonna-
Well, we won't, we won't actually be doing any of this until February first is when we will be taking over, so.
So, um, does any of the commissioners listen, talk about that now, anyone have any concerns about this?
Well, the only thing, you know, generally, the cities, you know, they, they tax where they get paid for their water, get paid for their infrastructure, to pay for their hydrants and all that stuff. They're relinquishing all of that, and then they still have to pay for it, that's, you know.
They're, the city will still tax its citizens.
Well, they don't get any revenue back.
The, the city will still tax its residents to maintain their water system.
Oh, that's correct, I'm just saying, to, in order to keep the fire hydrants and the fire structure going, that, that was when they used to tax, or like Morrell does, Morrell taxes, and then they give the biggest share of the money, all goes right to the fire department, and whatever they put in goes right to the fire department. By not doing that, that's their choice, I guess, whether they do or not.
Well, what, the last thing you said is the most important. These two political subdivisions have made an agreement, and there's, there's no reason for the commissioners not to approve it.
The water lines and all that are gonna be maintained, because it's the same water lines that feed the houses-
Yes.
-that also feed the, the hydrants.
Yes.
And so they're gonna-
So statutorily, you change boundary lines for fire districts.
Gonna take care of it. Right.
That's, we did this a few years ago when we adjusted-
All of them.
Adjusted of, of fire districts, because we had some properties in the wrong districts.
Correct.
So statutorily, that's why they're coming to you, because you must approve the change in the boundary lines of the district and the county.
Are you saying here that we need a resolution that the county?
We're gonna get a separate resolution of the county commissioners to change- To change the boundary lines of Kaua Fire District.
Right. These are agreements between themselves.
Yes.
Correct.
But we need one for the county, and so, uh, whoever's gonna make sure that happens?
We're gonna, uh, uh, Mark Kavarek and I, he's, is he the village attorney?
He's the village attorney.
Well, we're, we'll make sure you have something in mind.
He wrote, he was the one that wrote up the, the contract or whatever that you have in front of you.
So, you make sure and coordinate with that and make sure we have a resolution that you or your office can be happy with and, um, tell us that it's okay.
With it.
Okay.
Okay, do I need to come back at the next meeting to do that, or is that something-
Well, that's why I ask, if anyone had any concern.
I don't think so. I think you already want to state your case. We just need to prove it and send it on back.
Right, so I don't see why you'd have to come back.
I wouldn't.
Good.
Okay.
Fly south. Fly south tomorrow.
Alright.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, I plan to go through the next two items, and then once we're finished with those two items, I plan to take a break. So, the next item is receive presentation regarding TERT activation to North Carolina. Selinda Howard.
Oh, yeah, I've got it over here. I asked Selinda to come to this meeting. I, I invited her because I feel like you, we need to show what she's been doing, or what, show this project that she participated in and how the county benefits from her service to North Carolina. So, I wasn't sure if you were all aware, and I believe I, we've sent out the news article that the governor activated the TERT team, and what, four or five of you went to North Carolina and assisted as dispatch personnel? So, anyway, Selinda Howard, she worked, she works as our trainer in the dispatch center in nine-one-one.
I'm the training coordinator downstairs. So, um, I was just gonna explain hopefully quickly, um, what TERT is and what I did, what my part was whenever I responded with TERT. So, TERT was created back in two thousand and five after Katrina, um, made landfall in Louisiana, and their dispatchers were completely overwhelmed, not able to keep up and to cope with what was happening. So, the two dispatch, the national dispatch organizations got together, APCO and NINA, and jointly they created what is now called TERT, which is the Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force. This is a program that helps to train and deploy dispatchers to assist other comm centers that are, have had a disaster or under, um, some sort of duress. They're just, they're overwhelmed and they can't handle what's going on. So, Nebraska TERT is included in the Nebraska Emergency Management Association resource list, so after those dispatchers are trained here in Nebraska to be a member of TERT, um, then they become a resource for the state. They will always be a resource for their home agency first, the state second. So, at any time, they could be called back to, um, fulfill a need at their home agency, even if they were out on a deployment. They could still be called back. Because everybody in, all the governmental agencies in Nebraska are associated with NEMA, anybody in Nebraska, any agency in Nebraska that had a need could request a TERT response to come in and help supplement their dispatchers in a time of crisis. Any reimbursement when it's an in-state deployment situation would be between local agreements between those agencies. It doesn't have to go through the EMAC or FEMA or anything like that. It's just an agreement between those two agencies. What I did was an out-of-state deployment, and that could only happen under the term of an EMAC request that was facilitated through NEMA. So, in order for us to do that, the governor of their state had to make the request through EMAC, and then our governor saw and had our state coordinators to reach out and see if we could create a team to go and assist. So, I got this email, uh, while I was on vacation actually, that said, um, North Carolina had a need for eight teams. This would have been the second EMAC request they had made. The first one came out actually the first day after the incident, and they already had boots on the ground working in the comm center. This was a second request, and it went further out, so it hit Nebraska. Can we do this for them? We had to be willing to work a twelve-hour shift. Um, we had to be able to work fire, police and EMS. So, any dispatchers in the state that don't work all three would not have been considered a resource for this response. We had to provide our own headset, so if it was a smaller agency that doesn't actually use a headset in dispatch, then they would not have been a resource that could be used either. So, that was narrowing our numbers way down on the, the people that, that would be able to make this response happen. They said that we had to be able to self-sustain for three days, which meant that we had to take everything that we needed to survive as a human for three days. We had to provide our own bed, our own food, our own water, our own clothes, whatever. We had to, if we needed it for three days, we had to take it with us. And that our deployment would be no longer than a ten-day deployment, but that didn't count the travel time, so it was a total of fourteen, sixteen for me, fourteen for the people on the eastern side of the state. I initially told them that I could not respond because I wasn't here. I was out of state. The next day, they came back to me and they were like, hey, please, 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 we'll make it, we'll make it work, we'll figure out how. So, I got home on the third of October. Well, I reached out to Tyler first, and I'm like, hey, so is this a thing? Is it gonna be okay? And he said yes, that I could be spared. So, we went through a lot of information gathering. They wanted to know, they had to, um, submit the forms back to EMAC, what were, what was all of it gonna cost? So, the cost for me, um, they needed to know what my hourly wage was, what my overtime rate was, what is the county, my benefit package to the, for the county, what is the county's part that they pay? How much was all of that? My work week, um, my normal hour shifts, um, holiday pay, how much would my holiday pay be, because one of the days we would be gone was a holiday? So, um, they gathered up all that information. I used Kim a lot, because I was out of town. So, Kim gathered all that up, information up and went back and forth with the state coordinator. They submitted that for a team of four people, it would be forty-six thousand dollars for those fourteen days, and, um, North Carolina accepted that offer, went back and forth with their governor, our governor, all the different things. Everybody got everything approved. I left home at one o'clock in the morning on the fourth, um, found out that I would be going to Asheville, North Carolina. This is an actual picture of part of downtown in Asheville. The flooding and the mudslides that happened there, um, were horrific. It was, Asheville was actually the, uh, community that was hit the hardest, um, in North Carolina. And they are supposed to have seven, seventy dispatchers, and they were working with fifty-one, so they were already short when this incident happened. Um, and then they had dispatchers who had lost family members, entire families. One girl lost eleven members of her family all at once in a mudslide. They also lost, um, two firefighters in that same mudslide that was trying to rescue that eleven. So, it was, it was a huge impact to these dispatchers, and they were still working and had been working since it happened. So, to be able to go and provide help to them really meant a lot. So, um, on the fourth, I got there that morning. I got there about eight-thirty. We loaded up two vans, and, um, we had verbal approval from the governor. We were told, we, we had a pre-deployment briefing with TERT, um, all of the TERT members, the TERT coordinator, and then with, um, NEMA. Two members from NEMA, from the state, were there. They told us that we had verbal approval, that the governor had already placed the forty-six thousand dollars necessary to reimburse our agencies in a special fund. So, as soon as we got back and we turned in our timesheets and all of our costs, then that could be immediately reimbursed. Then, the state would then wait the six to twelve weeks to get it, get it back from North Carolina. So, I thought that was really helpful to the county, that, that he would do that. We left Lincoln around ten-thirty, the morning of the fourth. We got to Mount Vernon, uh, ten o'clock that night, Mount Vernon, Illinois. We stayed the night there in a hotel, got up the next morning, took off again. We arrived in Asheville at six-thirty-five on the evening of the fifth. We were told we had to be there before dark, um, because of the conditions going in. There were still power lines down, um, there were still trees down. They were trying to clear the, the roadways the best they could, so it was a challenge. The further we went, the more road closures we ran into. We would, you know, we were watching it on the map and trying to talk to people on the ground as well. We, we arrived there, we stayed in a gymnasium for five days, and it was eighty degrees during the day, and it was in the forties at night, so it was very cold. We had electricity, but we had no other, we didn't have running water. We didn't have toilet systems, anything like that. We had a porta potty and some shower trailers, and we were housed in the school gymnasium with, uh, teams from Kentucky, Georgia, Ohio, Florida, and then us. And remember when I said you're a resource for your state, secondly, your own agency first? The first night we were there, uh, Florida was notified that Milton was, Melton was coming in the hurricane, and all of Florida was recalled. Their state said, we need our people back to take care of ourselves, and they called all of their people back. So, we lost part of our people, but new people came in. It was just like a constant revolving door. This is me working. The guy in the red shirt, he's the one who trained me for three hours, my very first day there. Um, he was from Kentucky, and he had been working as a EMS dispatcher for five days. So, he's the one that trained me, and then over the course of the next three days, we rotated back and forth. It was exhausting. Um, we did over two hundred, we did an average of two hundred medical calls, dispatched medical calls, um, in our twelve-hour shift. And it, it was exhausting. We were, it, it was just busy. Um, that's just my schedule. I'm not gonna really go into that. This was what I had to work off of, so the right-hand side was my schedule of all of the different units. I averaged fifty. It would go up or down depending on how many people they had come in. These people, none of them knew the area either. They were strike teams that had came in from other states, and so it was a challenge geographically to get them where I needed them to be, or for me to know where they needed to go, because I just had that little pencil map right there that was colored. It was cute. But it served its purpose, and by the end of the time, I knew what I was doing. Five days in, for me, which would have been ten days after the event, they said, oh, we gotta get our kids back in school, so you have to leave the gym. So, they moved us to the FEMA camp, but I was so happy because I got a hot shower and I had a warm place to sleep. I had some laundry service. They had people out there that did our laundry, and you pick it up two hours later. They had a big dining hall. That's what that big white tent is across the top. But we had forty-six trailers that housed twelve people apiece, so that tells you how many of us were there. It was, uh, we did have security on-site, and a couple of days into our being there, I guess, some of the hill people got mad with FEMA, and they had a little bit of uprising, so they increased security, but at, at no point did we not feel safe. This is a video to show you just how tiny it is. Don't judge my junk. But it was so warm, I didn't care. Oh, my goodness. I got sick while I was there. It was, it was awful, but it was wonderful at the same time. This is just some of the damage to the roadway, to power lines. This picture on the left, that van actually belonged to a dispatcher. Her neighbor's she shed landed on top of it. Neither one of them had a home anymore. The homes were completely wiped out. Part of that church is gone, and then this other house over here belonged to a different dispatcher that I worked with, uh, five days, and she hadn't been back home other than to sit there and take the picture because it was still flooded and she couldn't get to it. When I walked in my first shift, there were dispatchers sleeping underneath the counters because they hadn't even left yet, and I got there seven days in to the event. So, I mean, it was just, it was awful, but I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to have been able to, to go and to represent Scotts Bluff County and the state of Nebraska and help these other dispatchers. These are some messages from kids. When the kids got back in school, they sent messages and they hung them all over the walls, and, um, then these are, this is, um, part of the people that I worked with that, during the time I was there, and I just wanted you all to know what I did and that I really appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to go.
One, one question. When you first started the presentation, they said you needed three days of whatever you needed. Does, what happened after the three days? Who furnished your stuff?
They worked us into the food program. I'm sorry. I was trying to hurry really fast.
Well, I, I was trying to, because I, you said the three days, and I know you stayed longer than that.
Right. They, it went back and forth. Before we left, we were told, you're gonna have to be able to take care of yourself the whole time, for three days, for five days, and it wound it up, it was three days, um, in the end. But, um, APCO, the Nebraska chapter of APCO, uh, provided us with eight cases of water and, um, toilet paper, um, baby wipes and things like that. We did take two vans. There were four of us. We, two people to a van, and we loaded up. We took-
The, the other three were from where, Selinda?
Um, two were from Lincoln, from Lincoln Public Safety, and one was a girl from Seward.
Okay, so that was the Nebraska delegation that was down there?
Yes. Yeah, and we-
I don't thi- I don't think you need to thank us.
Yes, I do, otherwise I wouldn't have been able to go. I appreciate it. I really do.
That's the farthest thing. We need to really thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we do. We appreciate it, and, you know, it's, um. I know that MPPD a lot of times is sending people on, um, these kind of missions, and, um, it was, um, gratifying to know that other people, um, could help out as well, and, um, we don't, we haven't had a major and serious catastrophe here for a long time.
Right.
And, um, but when we're able and willing to help others, hopefully someday if we ever have those kind of issues, there'll be people to come and be willing to help here if needed.
No, definitely.
And, uh, whether it's here or somewhere else in Nebraska, and we appreciate what you did and, um, the others, whether Tyler and Troy and whoever else was instrumental in putting the permission together to go.
Yeah.
And we appreciate, appreciate that.
You know, we do, we do a good job of taking care of ourselves.
Right.
All, all the time.
Yeah.
And that's what makes this, this whole area so great to live in, you know? But now we know that, that you're able to do, represent us in helping somebody else.
Right, and, you know, that, that organization is still there. If something was to happen, you know, it's, it's available to us as well. There are twenty-three states that have active TERT teams, and the, I don't, I don't know why the others don't, but I know there are twenty-three, um, different states that do have active TERT teams.
Yeah, we all saw it on the news. You know, we weren't there, but you were there.
Oh, yeah.
There, there're gonna be things that you're never gonna forget.
Yeah, yeah. I have a lot of pictures that-
My bad.
Didn't make it. But thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I think this is a good example of how important training is for everybody when it comes to emergency management disasters and your different skill levels.
Definitely.
I've deployed several times, and you never know what you're gonna end up doing when you get there.
No.
And-
Well, and that's why, you know, they dispatched all three disciplines, and that's why they had to have someone that could do all three disciplines. If you didn't do all three, you couldn't even be considered, so, like the NSP dispatchers, I know there are some of those that are on that TERT team, but they couldn't, they couldn't go because all they do is the law enforcement side. They don't do fire or EMS, so it, it limits it. But it's good, you know, it's good that they have built into the system to let you know ahead of time what, what you have to have, what kind of requirement you have to have.
Well, you represent us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anything else on this item?
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, thanks so much for telling us about it and showing us what you did, and we appreciate it. Um, so we are going to do, um, one more item, and then we'll take a break. But the next item is the emergency manager and the introduction of Rob Crowder and the Region Twenty-two Emergency Management person.
Could we do two?
Excuse me, moving packet for everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
We did two. She was-
Grab his packet here.
Good evening, Commissioners, and, uh-
Good evening Commissioners, and uh, I'll be brief because I don't want to stand between anybody and a break, so. Um, my name's Rob Crowder, I'm the new Emergency Management Director for Region Twenty-two. Um, I just started, I think it was the first week of September, so we're not, not quite ninety days in yet, so. Uh, my apologies, it's taken me this long to, to come forward, you guys. But um, uh, inside your packet, we've got the uh twenty twenty-three annual report from NEMA. Um, it's kind of good uh screenshot of what they did last year and how uh there's some panhandle events uh within that, of course. Um, hopefully here after, uh, first quarter of twenty-five, we can get the updated version. Um, also tucked in the packet is a little infographic that Ashley put together before uh she left on some of the things that our office can do. Uh, not just for Scotts Bluff, for, 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 excuse me, for the whole region. Um, NIMs training, um, some, one of our standalone tornado shelter projects we're just starting to work on, and then some of the boards, of course, that we represent. Um, or that we uh sit on. Um, we've also got a, um, number of uh avenues, I guess, on, for home line security funding and that type of stuff, so. That next cycle's coming up, uh, I think IJs are due in February or March, so. Um, we'll be pushing that out to everybody, and we've been working with Transit on uh backup generator, on some of those type of projects, so. Um, I can ramble on the miss for quite a while, so I'm not going to, just for y'all's time. Uh, the, the last thing I have for you is a updated certificate for storm ready for Scotts Bluff County. That is good, uh, three twenty twenty-seven from the National Weather Service, so. Pending any questions, I will let you guys get to break, so.
Welcome to Scotts Bluff County.
Thank you, thank you guys very much, and I uh appreciate the opportunity, so.
And you came from the Julesburg area, is that what I understand?
Yes, sir. Yep, the very northeast corner of Colorado, so.
Okay.
Everybody was talking about how long a move it was to Nebraska, and it was three quarters of a mile from my old office, so it was not far at all.
Yeah, Julesburg's not far from Nebraska.
No, nope, nope, on two sides, so.
Yeah, I drive through there quite a bit, so I'm familiar with it, so.
Well, thank you, folks.
Okay, well, appreciate you coming and introducing yourself, any questions for Rob while we have him here?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you guys, yeah, we're in the basement, everyone stop by and visit, so.
Yeah, something that uh we've done with the Board's Management, we uh, we've taken our meetings to on the road. So we hold our meetings in the various communities in Scotts Bluff County, Banner County, and so we're getting to see people who work in those offices, they're getting to see us. And it's working out really well, and Robert's done a really good job, and Ashley, the two of going around and talking individually to different ages, fire and law enforcement agencies. Uh, replying, continuing, doing that.
Absolutely, yeah, the next Commissioner, or uh, uh, next meeting is December nineteenth in Mitchell, I believe, so. I encourage anyone to come, so.
All right, we appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so I mentioned we're gonna take a break, and I think we'll go ahead and do it now, Rick, can you guys hang on for eight minutes more? All right, so, we're gonna take a recess, I'm planning eight minutes, and I've got six oh four right now.
Everybody gets three minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just talked about it.
Is it ready? Yeah, six twelve.
Nice to meet you.
All right, so let's try and get started.
A little gavel auction, please?
Yeah. All right, the meeting will come back to order, and um, we're on the item to discuss and consider simulcast paging system. Tyler, looks like you're up.
All right, this is another item, uh, that comes from the nine oh one Advisory Board. And we did have a quorum when this was brought as an action item, and it was unanimously uh... Supported and approved by the board. You'll see in your packets there, uh, the quote from Action, and then a little info sheet on uh some of the equipment. That will be used in this proposed uh simulcast paging system. Basically, uh, and then you'll see a estimate sheet and parts list and stuff like that. Basically, what the system will do is it will allow um... Fire departments to be paged out from the public safety building in Scotts Bluff. If all of our paging equipment here was destroyed or totally powered off. So that we would be redundant at that location as well for paging, along with the way we're redundant in our radio system over there and our nine oh one call taking. Uh, this will also allow redundancy in the event, uh, if the equipment at the South Mitchell site were to fail. That'll be usable for pagers, uh, and for tornado sirens in Scotts Bluff County. Uh, because both of the transmitters transmit at the same time, it makes my staff uh tasks a little bit easier with any department that uses pagers. And uh, it just will simplify things for the paging of fire departments and sirens. And if you have any high level technical questions about the equipment or the installation, I would refer you to Rick. Because he is much more intelligent on the details of that stuff than I am.
Tyler, didn't we uh put a console in Scotts Bluff to do exactly what you're saying, when we bought all the new hardware?
No, that's for two-way radio communication.
This is for what?
This is for paging, for the, for the fire departments and, and for sirens, the actual equipment behind the scenes that makes the paging work. We have consoles at Scotts Bluff where, you know, my staff sits and hits the button for, you know, Scotts Bluff pagers, gearing pagers, and they talk to the fire departments. But the equipment behind the scenes that actually makes it work, uh, that's what this makes redundant. All the stuff that you don't see in equipment rooms and, and things like that.
I didn't realize we were still carrying pagers anymore.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
There's probably five hundred pagers in Scotts Bluff County.
Really?
Uh, just to clarify a little bit, um...
Yeah, come on closer, Rick, do that mic.
Rick Durr, the E R R, um, and uh Commissioner Isaac, we, when the comm center here in Gearing failed. We recognized that uh, there was a mechanism for Scotts Bluff County, or excuse me, the public safety building to do paging from Scotts Bluff. But when this data center here failed, we lost that ability. And so we were able, within two hours, we were able to restore everything that was taken out because of that outage. Except for paging. Now, if we would have needed to set off tornado sirens, we had no, no mechanism. And so that was the, the biggest short com, or that was a, a short shortage that we uh identified. The other issue, I think Tyler did a great job of explaining everything, uh, there is one additional uh thing. Each fireman, because from South Mitchell, South Mitchell is what pages everyone. And we have this thing called the National Monument between Gearing and South Mitchell. And so whenever a pager is physically in Gearing, they have to change channels. When they leave Gearing, they go to Scotts Bluff, they go to a different channel. Well, you know, imagine if you had your cellphone, and it wasn't automatic, and you would have to change frequencies from each tower to each tower to each tower. You would find yourself out of sync and not getting paged, and this fixes that, this, this transmits both uh... Both sites, one at the tower here in Gearing and one at South Mitchell, they both transmit simultaneously, thus the term simulcast paging.
That's almost a better description than he gave.
I got more years.
And you say the committee um voted unanimously that they wanted to spend the money to do that?
Yes.
Which would mean all of those areas that help fund this fund is willing to help pay for that.
Yes.
Are there any grants available to help with that?
Uh, no, um, radio grants have really dried up since pretty much nine eleven.
Typically paging, most radio grants that happen, uh, have a designator of P twenty-five. That's the county system that Motorola and us installed. Paging does not use P twenty-five technology, therefore it probably would not uh be uh grant funding, uh, from the feds anyway. There wouldn't be any grants for that.
Rick, are there any other uh dead spots or other areas that aren't covered, that are, that are, we, we, we should look at in the future?
Um, not that I'm aware of, uh, because South Mitchell really covers...
Do, will it go over the Wildcats, or will it do everything over there as well?
Well, we typically aren't paging uh firemen that are in the, you know, out of Scotts Bluff County. Our only weak spot is actually uh in the city of, of uh, uh, Gearing. That's, areas that are shielded by the monument is our weak spot. And our inability to page from the, the uh public safety building in Scotts Bluff.
And this would solve that?
That's correct. And uh, by the way, I'd like to introduce my partner, Kent Sager. Uh, he typically runs our uh Cheyenne and Colorado operations, and uh, he's actually installed this simulcast system uh for Logan County and Sterling, so.
So you'd be the one to do it here then, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I would, I would move for approval.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
What was the price, what was this costing?
Fifty.
Yeah, right?
Fifty-five, five forty-eight, oh seven, I think is what you're talking about?
Does that come out?
Yes.
That's the second page in the packet.
Yep.
Right in here, the number fifty-five, eight, five, six.
Fifty-five, five forty-eight, oh seven.
Oh my God. When are you buying this, I mean, we have eighty-eight thousand in the fund. So, it's just, if that's what's being paid, we have to buy this right away? Along with the fire thing, I mean, we...
Right, we don't have enough to do.
Like, we have to give Scotts Bluff, the city of Scotts Bluff to pay for their Motorola piece.
No, you, you, we can do it, uh, Kent, what do you think the shipping time on that equipment is?
Last one was about four and a half months to get the equipment.
Oh, to even get it here?
Yeah.
Do we have to pay upfront?
No.
Say cash will be an issue, okay.
Right, because we're just, we're approving uh fifty plus fifty, so a hundred thousand, and you certainly don't have that in the account right now, is what you're saying?
Nope.
So...
We still have to get Scotts Bluff to pay their portion of Motorola because we had, because of the issues of how it was managed, so we gotta figure out how to fix this, but...
And I don't know how those payments are expected to come in, but...
They usually be, we should be receiving a chunk of money by June, so.
Okay.
For the fiscal year, but may, if not before, maybe we can start billing sooner.
Mm-hmm, so if we wanna, I guess, whether Tyler or Rick or whoever wants to stay in touch closely with Lisa. To know when that money's actually gonna be available, if you need to do that.
All right.
But certainly, yeah, we don't have the money in the account to do both immediately, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion and a second, but we do have that caveat that you need to be aware of, I guess. So. Any other, go ahead.
Um, so I, I think listening to that first uh need, that's gonna trump the paging.
I think it will to the extent that we didn't warn them about that.
Yeah, well, and it's gonna be uh done in January, so I, I think that's uh, you know, we've, we've lived with this for many years. You know, so it's hard to say when there's gonna be a, a, a failure, but uh, uh, I certainly would be willing, if you would approve the project. Uh, have Lisa and Tyler uh give me the green light when we can order the equipment. And I will check on uh expected ship times of the equipment and communicate that to Tyler. Uh, so that we're, I mean, it's important to us, I don't have an extra fifty thousand laying around, so it's gonna be important to get paid when it's installed, so.
Yeah.
That, that works for Action Communications.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just so we understand that.
So I, I'm gonna vote yes with the thought process that... Action and Tyler and Lisa will communicate on when to place the order.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and um, so based on what we've just heard. Um, well, and they understand that, and that's what they just said, um, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried.
Thank you.
And appreciate you being here.
You bet, good evening.
Yep.
You know, while we're here, you know, maybe we should talk about... The, the fact that there's not enough money in the account to, to purchase things that the stewards of the account have said to go buy. Where, where is the, where's the disconnect there, and, and is the, because this is the nine one one committee?
Yeah.
Correct? So where is, are they aware that Scotts Bluff hasn't paid for their Motorola radios? And I wasn't aware that Scotts Bluff hadn't paid for their nine one one or their Motorola's yet, so...
Yeah, and say, that's something we're discussing and having, I mean, we, we need to get it under control because we didn't pass the budgets correctly. And back when Ray was on the committee, it was Ray and Suzie Wick doing a lot of this, and then we, and Tyler came on, and honestly, I was expecting, he was doing more, he probably was expecting more from me. As far as who watches the funds and how we set up the amounts to pay, and when, who, who brings it in front of the advisory committee. It's a little bit of a conundrum, so we need to get it all understood, because yeah, that, that surprised me, I didn't realize the cost of that. And I've gone to a couple of meetings and didn't realize that that was coming forward at that amount, was that something, they didn't bring it up at the last meeting.
That was uh the August, August...
Back in August?
That was that, for past.
So.
The um... So Lisa, do you normally attend that meeting?
I'm hit and miss.
Okay, and you're there for um... For the financial part of things, I'm assuming, of the entire group?
Have been, yes.
Maybe this is des- suggested needs to be that anytime there's a large funding thing that needs to happen, that they need to make sure and work with you to make sure that the funding is there for it, obviously.
Well, I guess so, that's what I know Ben called today and asked what the fund balance was, and came to the meeting. But yeah, then this other project's coming in too, and it's like, wow, wait.
Because everybody, you know, they vote on it, they talk about it, and for whatever time they're there doing it. But if there is any money to take care of it, it's kind of a moot point, so.
Money, and yeah, and like they said, the quorum thing.
Right, is, is important to... Who's the president of that group?
Ben is the chairman.
Ben Backus, okay.
And he's going off, and then uh Nathan Plowes will go in his spot.
I see. So that person needs to be fully aware too of kind of the balance and whatever financial information that um... That's available to them, that um, that they need to be aware of.
Is this always the same, is it always the twenty-nine, is it, both of these are twenty-nine tens?
I thought the other one wasn't.
They're both twenty-nine tens, but we're dealing...
So, I mean, is it something my office could pro- provide a copy to somebody else on top of it, or something?
A copy of what?
The expenditures for every month?
We could, but I mean, it's the balance of the fund too, and the collections from the different entities that... Well, it could, but I mean, it's the balance of the fund too and the collections from the different entities that come into play.
But doesn't it show revenues and what's left?
Yours, yours doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah. Yours shows one side, hers does the other, so. And we give them, I mean, like you guys, we give them their reports every month.
Sounds like, um.
I didn't mean the department, I meant the, the committee, is what I was.
Oh.
Potentially. I mean, maybe it needs to be addressed as more of an action item and.
Nathan needs to be sure
I think we will.
as an oncoming, um, chairman, I, um.
But if it was passed in August and has taken till now before we discussed it before, it's just kinda got set back as a project?
Uh, pretty much the, the, uh, well, we didn't have any, we didn't have any quorums, uh.
But was it on the agenda?
Well, it was, it was passed in August and then my wife went in for her surgery the day after that and then she was in the hospital for basically two months.
Was, uh.
Okay.
And so.
When it was passed, did you know how much the total was gonna be?
Yeah.
At that time, that fifty-five?
Did you know what the amount was in the, in the account?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, I think we just, we're gonna get passed at this time, but we don't wanna, there's no reason for that issue to come up like that again.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, we, we can do better than that, right?
We need to maintain some money in that account as well.
Thought we usually did, but then you just came, brought two big projects and they're a hundred thousand bucks.
Right.
And we didn't adjust budgets to cover this.
Right, and how much is their total, um, budget in a annual basis?
Would you like me to pull it up? I'm like, oh.
No, I, again, this item is.
We're getting passed into the agenda.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
I'll save the commissioners.
Yeah.
We're on the agenda thing next time.
Alright, alright.
Right. And I think, um, the the current president at the time, uh, should probably be around and we oughta make sure that they're.
Help them set the budgets and such.
Right. Okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
But it needs to be addressed.
Don't do, don't go there.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So I think that gets us past the, uh, simulcast paging part of this. The next item is discuss and consider appointment of commissioner lay member on the personnel board. Um, Lisa?
Okay, I just pulled up the terms of the personnel board and you've, you, um, placed Tony Schuler in there in twenty-twenty-two and his tr- he has fulfilled his term.
He had three years.
He had three years, there were supposed to be four, but then you didn't bring back Dave Groshens. We brought in Tony and I wonder, I just, my question to you is, do you want to ask Tony to remain on the committee? He's, he's been very good.
Has he, is he willing to, to serve again?
As my understanding, he would, we need to formally ask him.
He's a good, he's a good member, he adds a lot to the, to the group.
Yes.
I, I think, or at least when I was on.
I talked him up at Federal Immoral the other day and he, I think he'd be very open to serving another year.
How, how does he seem when you're at the meetings?
Well, of course, you know, um, uh, he and I got off on the wrong foot, the very first item that we had, which was the old, um, issue of, uh, Juneteenth.
Oh.
Right, and the next, and not so much Juneteenth, but the fact of an extra holiday. And, um, he was for that, I was strongly against it. And, um, so to that extent, he and I didn't agree. And, um, uh, he certainly comes, um, now especially from a background of being a public employee and I would much rather, um, this be, uh, a position that would preferably, in my opinion, come from the private sector.
Well, that was, it was intent.
Right. And he was kind of that when he was appointed.
When he first got on, right.
And where, how was he working previously or where?
He was self-employed, he was driving truck, he had his own truck.
Okay, when he came on.
Yes.
And now he's part of the Village of Morel, right?
He wasn't, yeah, he was, that's what he first got on. No, he was, I think he was a mayor, but now he's, uh, groundskeeper, I believe, for the city.
Yeah, I think he's involved somehow with a, as a, and so, um, the only thing that I would possibly ask is that we at least consider it, at least to the next meeting and then make the appointment.
Appointment, and I know, uh, can I just make one statement, then you can, um, three years ago, we advertised for it. I don't, it does, statute does not say you have to advertise for this to get people to, like, put their name in. But, anyway, you're.
Well, I think what we did last time, Ken had a name, you, you had asked for Kent Haydenfeld and I asked for Tony and we agreed on Tony somehow.
Kent didn't apply on time, cause we advertised and everything was due by like Sunday and he sent something Monday.
That's exactly. I think he made a phone call or something, but he didn't, he didn't do it correctly.
He didn't do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it was.
Charlie had a comment, I.
You know how those attorneys are.
I wouldn't be opposed to advertising for it.
Well, I think that'd be a good idea.
The, uh.
See, I would say I agree.
Wasn't there a more recent issue in just in the last three or four months? Something that came from the Personnel Board to the Commissioners for approval and Tony came to speak about it?
No, I don't think so.
Maybe, I don't remember that.
I don't remember him coming on site recently or coming back. Are you, when you say a couple of months ago, might've been a year?
Might've been a year.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I think it was longer than that, but I believe it, right.
I was, I think it was sometime, I'd, I'd say it's in the last six months at the.
Are you sure you didn't go to the Personnel Board meeting?
No.
Okay.
He was here and he was, he was taking the side of the employees. Um, he was trying to explain to the Commissioners why the Personnel Board had come to the decision that they had. I guess.
Yeah. I, I think that.
And you're, you're normally there, aren't you?
I'm not most, I'm not on the Personnel Board.
Are you talking from the back of the room?
All these meetings, but I don't recall.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think that, um, maybe the thing to do is simply advertise. And then that gives everybody, um, chance. And it gives us a chance to think, I'm certainly not a, not in favor of making the decision right here tonight.
No.
And you guys are hearing about it for the first time.
I am.
And that's, I, I've known, known that this was coming, but you guys didn't, and it's not fair to, um, make a decision right here, right now. Um, and I, I like the idea of, I had forgotten the fact that we had advertised before. And I, I think that's a, a good way to, to at least look at the position.
Well, and then maybe you can, like I said, you don't have to.
Right.
Well, like, um, elected officials, they have a layperson as well and they just brought a person on with a lot of HR background and I think she's gonna be very helpful.
Yeah. Becky Stitt, yeah.
So, yeah, Becky Stitt.
And she's, she has tons of experience, um, in that field and, um.
So if you could find someone with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Or tap somebody to apply, if you know someone, would be, anyway, yes, we can advertise, how's that?
Would that be okay with everyone?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Okay, so you're basically going to table. Cause you're not gonna consider until we advertise.
Yeah. Do we need to take action to table, do you think, Phil?
Just do it.
I'll make a motion to table this agenda item of discuss and consider appointment of commissioner lay member on Personnel.
It's gonna hurt to have a motion, I guess.
Can I bring it back the beginning of January, cause my first meeting is in the middle of January?
When does the term end?
Uh, December thirty-one.
But we don't have a meeting till.
January twenty-fifth, I believe.
Oh. So we need to bill by then, hopefully.
Yeah, so if we can shoot for that first meeting.
And you'll, you'll put the application out prior to that, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Try to get it done, if not this week, next week.
So we have a motion and a second to table with the thought to, um, advertise. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried to table. Okay, um, I think then we're headed to old business, um, time clock plus and payroll processes.
I do not have an update for you today. I was scheduled to meet with, meet and was not able to make my meeting. So we have, we have to set up another meet to, meeting to take the next steps. I apologize for the delay.
What, what is the next step?
Getting the format ready to integrate our information, they need some information from me and put in, put in certain slots like department numbers and type of hours, like if it's a hour, holiday time, vacation time. Just, it's, anyway, just some information they need from me to put up into the into the format of each employee, so it flows over, so.
And you're still working on that?
I am still working on it.
Have an update for us, maybe next meeting.
Yeah, I hope so, right, you know, open enrollments kind of bogged me down and other issues that have come up, so.
Is that something the clerk's office can help with?
They've been busy with election and stuff and, I'm saying.
I was gonna say, I could offer Bry to help you up there if you need her.
I, Bry won't be the one that can help me, I would need Charlotte.
For data entries, she can't type department number?
I mean, you have to understand the whole system and everything, if you don't want, I mean.
Okay.
I, my, the paper will assess who I would need.
Okay, so we look forward to a, some kind of an update at the next agenda. Um, the next item is public comments. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented, um, this date. Is there anyone from the public here?
We are out of public.
Okay, doesn't look like it. So we'll go on to the board and staff reports with discussion. Well, we normally go around the room. Ms. Kelly, you wanna start?
Yes, please. So. Thank you, let me see, okay. The swearing-in date is the first Thursday after the first Tuesday of January for Ken and Russ.
What is it? Oh, that's swearing in.
The first Thursday after the first Tuesday. However, our first meeting is supposed to be on the sixth. I would like to move our first meeting to the thirteenth to get them sworn in for their new. But what I don't like about that is that's two weeks into the year before we have our reorganizational meeting and everything.
And why can't we do it on the sixth, Kelly?
I didn't say we can't, but you haven't been sworn in for your new term yet.
Well, we just have to meet with the judge and do that, don't we?
Yeah, but by state statute, there's a, how do you feel about it?
I haven't looked, I haven't, didn't know this was coming up, but does their term?
I just had to throw it out there while I had their attention.
Does the term end, um, of someone who is, who has not been reelected? Does it end on January ninth?
So there's been discussion about prorating pay because the new commissioner hasn't taken office yet. However, we don't prorate pay. It's set by resolution once a month, so it, it feels like they would still be in office, but technically, nobody, when Mike took office, the previous commissioner's term, it was understood ended twelve thirty-one.
I think the state statute says something about you get paid through the end of December and you do not get paid in January.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that you're out of office because our new commissioner hasn't been sworn into office either, so it's a technicality.
Right.
Insurance cutoffs were an issue that time too.
Oh, yeah.
Was it twelve thirty-one or do we have, do they have insurance through January thirty-one?
Well, the insurance isn't gonna be a problem because it's the same people.
It's the same.
I'm talking about.
This time, this time.
Yes.
Well, for this time then, do you hold office until the eighth? And then, and then the new office begins on the ninth? There's a statute I've got on it. I don't know what it says, cause I.
Wasn't prepared for that.
Wasn't prepared for that. So I can, if you look at the statute and find out when your term of office ends and when the, when it begins.
I think, wouldn't that really apply if you were, if you were a different individual? Where we're having the same, the same people, we would just continue as we, as we are from the last.
So her question is, um, if we have a meeting on the sixth, can they participate or did their term of office end on December thirty-first?
We got a certificate that indicates that we were duly elected. Yeah, we were in that position.
But, but there's, there's, you're duly elected to take office when your term starts.
I see.
Cause you're elected in November sixth, but your term, I don't know when the term starts.
But we're gonna have another meeting prior to that.
Then I'll know by then.
And we'll know by then, and it doesn't help Kelly immediately, but we'll have another meeting. And we can deal with it at that time, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Glad you brought it up.
Yeah.
If, if I'd have brought it up on December sixteenth, you'd have said that, it's the first time I heard about it and.
Too late. Right. So Phil's gonna fill us in at the next meeting. Okay, Phil?
Okay.
Okay.
Which it all started with, ask for Phil.
Okay.
Sorry, Phil.
Do you have any more, Kelly?
I don't think so.
The, uh, can.
If I do, I forgot.
Alright, so we'll know when that meeting will be when we meet next time. And then there's also, uh, is it in January that we have a holiday for the, that conflicts with the second meeting date?
Yes, we do.
Right, so that date would be moved back a day normally?
Yes.
Cause it's President's Day or something, if I remember right?
Martin Luther King. Yeah, Martin Luther King, well, it'll be the sixth or the thirteenth and then the second meeting of the month will be the twenty-first of January.
Alright, so be sure you note that that's the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday.
And then again, in February, we're gonna have a holiday on the second.
Right.
So what do we decide, January, are we meeting on the sixth or we are not?
We don't know.
We're, we will find out next week.
We won't know till two weeks from now.
Okay.
So in, uh, the twenty-first is in January and when did you say February was?
I looked at it five minutes, there were two, three minutes ago, I forgot.
I know, I'm sorry.
Um, instead of the seventeenth, it'll be on the eighteenth.
The eighteenth in February, the twenty-first in January. That'll be the second meeting of the month on each one of those. And we'll find out next meeting when the first meeting will be for January.
Just seems like a long time to not conduct any business into a new year and
Yeah.
reorganization and all of that stuff, so.
Yeah. Alright, and, but the, um, swearing-in ceremony would be the ninth, is that what you said?
It, it is the ninth and I can't, I, I set it up with, uh, the bailiff a long time ago, so I gotta double check what time.
Okay. And that's by state statute.
Well, the day is.
Yeah.
Now what time I picked.
You're right, but the day is.
Or we picked, I think we picked whatever the judge was available.
Alright, Kelly, so Phil will.
Can we be sworn in just at, you know, before the meeting starts at whatever, like if, if you decide to do it on the sixth, can we have a judge come down or can we go up by a judge?
By statute, it has to be the first Thursday after the first Tuesday.
Right, by statute.
I would love to be able to do it that way.
But we'll know more when Phil reports to us at the next meeting.
Okay.
There you go.
Good enough, alright.
Anything else for you, Kelly?
No.
Mr. Richter?
Unfortunately.
Well, we've seen some good information on.
Well, this is, uh, we had our quarterly state NDOT meeting last week and NDOT has come up with a new, uh, transit development plan requirement. It's basically a five-year business plan that we put together. Everything we want, you know, what, what we're doing now, what we're looking at, what our needs are going to be, even projected budgets five years out. That has to come before the board for approval within ninety days, which I just got the documentation today, documentation today to start on. And then from that, I take and I build my two-year operating agreement, which is essentially I take and build two annual budgets for the county and I combine them for two years because the state runs on a biannual budget. So I. So I have a meeting, I'm in NIM's training Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, to get my last, uh, ICS three hundred done. But I would like to forward this information to you gentlemen and have you read through it, throw ideas at me. Here, here's what we, we'd like to see you do, here's what, you know, any ideas, thoughts, suggestions for the next five years. Um, I'll, I'll forward the guidance document and then there's a questionnaire. I have a meeting with Hannah Severs from Olson Monday morning. Um, to kinda, and Olson's gonna help us with a lot of this. There's a lot of demographic information that has to go into it, a lot of statistics that NDOT already has. Um, ours is more of the forward-looking type stuff and then starting to crunch the, the actual budget numbers. And then if we're looking at any types of growth, for instance, if we get a casino in here, are we gonna need to expand our services to, to do, to help with that traffic? And what other source, revenue sources can we possibly go after to help offset that? What are we gonna look at for technology updates? So there's a lot of basic information in, in this, um, this guidance document that I'll forward you, and then there's the actual questionnaire that, um, please take some time, peruse it. Shoot me an email, call me or whatever. Again, I'll be in training Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week all day, but like, feel free to email me back. Mark it up, type in your comments and send it back to me and I'll put together a working document. And then Hannah with, with Olson and I will basically put together a rough draft. Kinda run it up the street of the state. They'll look it over and see if there's anything that they think we're missing. And then once we get it all compiled, and we may even have to have some, some, uh, public meetings of some sort, some town halls or anything. We only have ninety days. It's kind of a, first time this is happening, we gotta run it quick. But then once we get it put together, we'll bring it to, send it out to you gentlemen to review. And then it has to be approved by the governing body. Then once that's done, then I can finalize my two-year operating agreement, which is due March sixteenth. So, uh, the sooner we can get rolling on this, the better. But I will forward that to you, um, tomorrow. And like I said, just if you could provide me with any input, comments, ideas, thoughts going forward, I'd help us get that finalized as quickly as possible and back to you guys for approval.
Kurt?
You're gonna email that to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you regulated on how you charge for, when you, when you do charge for rides, passengers?
It is, it's all, um, done through resolution by you guys.
It's by us?
Yeah.
Uh, is there any, I mean,
The state doesn't regulate that?
No. No. Um, some, some agencies don't charge, some are a dollar. Um, we have our, um, basically ours broken down in mileage, up to eight miles is two dollars. Over eight, to, to, under sixteen is, is four and over sixteen is five.
That's what I was gonna ask you, if there was different rates for different mileage.
Yeah, it's all tiered. It's all tiered. Um, we haven't raised them since I've been here. Um, you know, we, I honestly, I, I've seen suggestions based on, you know, the article that Scott Miller put out today on our statistics. A lot of people are asking for Saturday service, if that's something, you know, somebody wants, something we need to talk about, bus shelters, uh, facilities, everything. And people are talking about, well, if we're gonna do this, then we're gonna have to raise our rate, you're gonna have to charge us more and two dollars doesn't seem like much, but when you're-
When you don't have two dollars?
When you don't have two dollars, it's a lot.
That's a lot.
Um, so, um, and that's my goal is to, to try and rein that cost in and not have to raise rates and find other revenue sources. A lot of changes going on in Medicaid, uh, new administration coming on board. A lot of unknowns, trying to put this together this time is not gonna be, it, it's gonna be a pretty blurry crystal ball.
Yeah, I'll bet it will.
Uh, a lot of snow in that globe, so, um.
So that, uh, article on KNEB News talked about your ridership is way up.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us about that and what you think's driving that?
I wish I knew, um, other than, um, maybe economic times are starting to finally hit some people harder than others. I think we've done a lot. I'm, I'm trying to do more outreach when I have time and, and go to the hospital and, uh, work with the schools and the college, um. But like I said, normally we, we're super busy first of the month when everybody gets their checks, gets paid, they go do their big grocery shopping trip of the month, and then it just trickles down and trickles down. We're not seeing a significant drop off at all. I have, I didn't look at the numbers today, but, um, we're towards the end of, of November, we were within ten scheduled rides of what we were the first of the month. Uh, it's just, and we're, we are actually just had to start running a sixth curb-to-curb driver to keep up and not put people out more than thirty minutes waiting for their return trips. Um, and I, I hope it's because we're getting a better reputation. We've worked really hard at improving our staff, getting better staff that are doing a better job, they're, they're more compassionate, more empathetic to the public and, and just providing better service. I hope that's a big driver for it. We've, we've really worked hard to get good quality people in there and, um, I think that's part of the, part of the reason. And, you know, we're still working with, you know, District Twelve Probation, Health Human Services, Aging Office, League of Human Dignity and those other human service agencies to help get people to their appointments and things, plus our Medicaid trips, so. And those are revenue streams that we hope to continue to tap and we're, when we're obviously looking for more. Those are the kind of ideas, if you could throw at me, if, if you have ideas where we can potentially go after some partners, public-private partnerships, so. But I'll throw those out to you in the email tomorrow. And like I said, if you have questions, whatever, you can always text me, call me, email me, but I will be in training Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I, I used to get a lot of calls when we first started up about, you know, I saw that bus go by and there's nobody on it, or there's one person on it, or what, you know, all of that. I don't get those anymore. I, I haven't had one and I don't remember the last time.
We're, we're pretty close to fifty-fifty fix out demand response.
I don't have to explain the existence of the, of the Tri-City anymore. I haven't had to.
Well, I still answer questions, but I'm just willing to answer them.
You're doing it right, whatever it is that's going on.
Holler, holler at me if you have questions and I'll definitely talk to those folks and, and answer any questions they have, so. I'm, I'm an open door guy and I don't want, I'm not hiding anything, fully transparent, so. But, uh, just wanted to keep you up, cause this is gonna maybe kind of a mover and a shaker, we gotta get it in pretty quick.
Okay.
So, okay, thanks gentlemen.
Thanks. Extension?
Well, I didn't share, that's something news. Recently, we received a grant from beyond school bells um, for additional STEM, science, technology, engineering and mathematics um, after-school programming. The grant covers, um, the salary of an individual to hire, uh, to implement this program, all the supplies in a trailer to drive from school to school in Scottsuffolof County. Um, so that's exciting. During the summer, they will continue to do outreach to all the summer programming that we have in Scottsuffolof County. Um, and then in addition to that, they will be training in other counties across the panhandle, um, youth to, um, to administer this, um, programming in their own communities, so. We're excited about that. We hired Janice Schwartz, who was our previous, uh, 4H assistant. Um, she was ready to come back to extension and so she will be implementing this program, um, starting today. Any questions?
They'll be seeing this person at the schools then?
After school. It's a trailer that she'll hitch up to pick up and drive it around. Um, town and has 4H, um, Nebraska Extension, um, STEM, STEM trailer. And we, we wanna have it parked around so that the community sees what we're doing, so it'll be advertised. I think, uh, Commissioner Lou, you were at our meeting, but
Right.
we didn't, uh, we couldn't announce yet who, who the individual is. Um, so, yeah, we're excited about that because that'll give us another individual, um, doing this work. We, we can't keep up with it.
I tell you, the STEM program is really awesome. I mean, these kids are getting a chance to do things they would never got to do.
Right.
And it's really bringing those students who have a tendency and desire to grow that they, they could really excel. I mean, it really, and I think it helps them in the classroom because they
Absolutely.
they take that attitude back to them into the classroom or other subjects, but it's
It's supplemental.
It's interesting, it's hands-on.
Right.
It's great.
Hands-on. Nathan does some really awesome work and all the technology on that, uh, trailer is, is all up to, up to speed and, and we're looking forward to it. So I thought I'd let you know bef- I'm not sure when Nathan will get back in here to report on that, hopefully after we have, uh, our numbers and something to report. Thanks.
Thanks. Heather?
Um, well, hang on. So I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I was gonna say that your tax statements, um, we got the county tax statements today in the mail, so they should be out. You should be starting to receive those. Uh, like Ken mentioned a couple of weeks ago, tax statements are quite a bit less because we're seeing that property tax credit on the front side. So, so it has made a difference in your taxes being less upfront. I was looking at one and the tax amount went down twenty-six hundred dollars in Scottsuffolof. It didn't go down quite as much in gearing and some of the other, because the levies didn't change as much. But if the value stayed the same, the taxes have gone down due to that property tax credit, yes, yes.
There you go. KNO bar, um, went from, what, I was just showing you this, four thousand two hundred last year to two thousand nine.
Yeah.
Your value didn't change much.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all about the school credit.
I mean, Ken told us about his going down substantially.
So.
And so I went on the Assessor's website. I didn't see where mine went down.
You'll, you'll see that when you get the actual, when you get the tax statements, which I'm, I'm assuming that you're probably, if you didn't get them today, you'll probably get them tomorrow. I know gearing got theirs delivered today, but, um, like one of my employees, her house, um, her taxes went up three dollars. And her value had increased also. So, you know, there's, there's different variables, but you'll see the, what the taxes were last year um, on the front of them and then what they are this year, so you can see the side-by-side with the new tax credit. Uh, the LB thirty-four.
That tax credit is what we used to get on our tax return.
Right, and now it's, you're getting it on your actual, yep, so you're getting it when you pay your taxes instead. You probably, yeah, you won't get that tax credit, so, you know. But it, it's a difference that people will be able to see when they get their tax statement, so I think that, um, overall, it's gonna be positive across the board. Um, and then the other thing that we have is, uh, we are ready to launch the new Scottsuffolof County website. As you can see on the homepage, this is the video that Brenda, uh, purchased and put in with the footage that Kurt's, um,
Can we check this?
Uh, it's play check of videos, paid for by NDOT.
Yeah, paid for by NDOT. Uh, good video of Scottsuffolof County as, you know, kind of our header for the homepage. We are working on a, a new logo for the county, um, which I think Charlie has talked to you guys about, but if you, can you scroll down just a little tiny bit? Um, if you go up to like the buttons across the board, um, and click on, like click on the payments button, it takes you right to the Nebraska Taxes Online Payment.
That's nice.
Um, for, for my website, plus there's a button for the Treasurers page and the Assessors page right there. You could, I think you could close that and it'll-
Why is Chimney Rock on our?
I think that's just like, it's just the picture of the valley. So. Um, but yeah, there's-
Scottsuffolof County when, when you're looking at Chimney Rock.
Yeah, it's just a picture of the, it's just the aerial footage of our, our area. And then if you scroll down, you can see the calendar, um, special highlighted dates and then, you know, some more of, just a solid picture. And then if you go to any of the department pages, uh, and click on any of them, you can, you see a picture with the hot air balloons and stuff like that on the back and then all of our information. So it doesn't really need to be an action item, but we wanted to kind of get your approval on it before we launch it. It's ready to launch. We can launch it tomorrow, um, so that you can, we can get it up and get it out there. We can launch it, I mean, as long as you guys are okay with it, we can get it tomorrow. There are a couple commissioners that I still need headshots from. If you would want to stop by the MIPS booth when you go to the NACO convention, they can take your headshots and we can put it in um, for you guys.
Can you just hover over the picture?
Mike and I look a lot alike.
Yeah, we do.
Unless, unless you have one that you have that you can send us.
Don't click the lens, but click the, just in the middle of the picture. So they still have these AI-generated bios. I think we may, might wanna take those out, unless we can write something else ourselves. What do you guys think?
I mean, they're not, I mean, it's, it's pretty generic. If you wanna get us something, if we launch the website with the things that are on it, we can change them at any time. That's kind of the difference between this website and the Bytes website that we have, um, right now, we have to submit a ticket to Bytes and then they have to go in and up, update everything. And we actually, I think almost everybody is set up so that they have their own editing capabilities and then we just go in and publish the page.
So if I wanted to change what that says there?
Get it to, if you wanna get it to me, I can get it uploaded.
Do you have to approve, Heather? Cause I saw we're-
I, I do approve. I, if I'm not approving it, MIPS is approving the changes and we did that just to make sure that we have, like a second set of eyes and make sure that, um, if you're putting a link on your website, that the links work and that nothing's taking you to something that's going to-
Show them the meetings for me.
Guide me, please. Was it what, a button?
Well, I mean, from the commissioners, you can get there, or quick links, meetings, you can get there.
Board meetings over, see that hyperlink over there on the right hand, yep.
So scroll down, that's what I can do now.
Yeah, so anytime she puts in, so then in a couple of days, when the video link is ready, she can go in and she can upload the video link and it's just right there. Um, which it'll click it and take it to our YouTube site, right?
And it's nice, it doesn't bring up a completely different web browser window, which just brings up just a YouTube plugin.
Some of, some of it, you gotta be careful. I'm just like our old one. Sometimes it's an additional page that's open and sometimes it is a brand-new page.
But it's a lot easier for, like Kelly to manage it.
Some of my stuff takes you to the Secretary of State's page and it's on there and towards the problems.
Okay, that's enough.
But yeah.
So we are gonna, so as long as everyone's okay with this, we're gonna, we can launch it tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And then we're gonna present, since we are the first county to have this done, um, we are going, we are going to, NACO is gonna use this as a presentation at the NACO conference to try to get other counties on board to, to come do the same thing.
There are a lot of counties that already had, had had MIPS hosting the old version of their website and this is gonna be the new template that they go off of to host all of the other ones. I know that they are working on Fillmore County's website right now. So I know that there will be other websites that shortly follow. Ours was a lot more in-depth because we have so many different departments that not every county has. Um, so it was a bigger project for them to build it at the very beginning. So, but they did a really good job. They've been open to every single suggestion that we've had, whether it be on colors, whether it be on fonts. They've really been very helpful and, um, anytime that we've sent them something, it's on the website within, if not in the next couple of hours, it's, you know, it's there the next day, so. It's actually, it's been a huge, I mean, it's been a fantastic thing for the county to have had MIPS do this for us. It saved us quite a bit. Plus, I, I don't know, can you pull up our old website? Like just on another tab and show them what it, I don't know if they realize how antiquated it was.
Yeah, I do.
There's a big difference.
Well, I, I would only say that obviously we haven't really seen it, but I trust, um, the committee's judgment and the work they've done on it. I know that I know that many of you have a passion to make sure that it's something, um, new and exciting, so to speak, and, um, I trust your judgment as far as I'm concerned, it's okay to, to make it happen.
You wouldn't let anything go out that wasn't correct.
Go back to, go back to the homepage for me.
On this website?
Yeah. I'm looking for, and my, my polling location can go away now too, but please scroll down. I'm looking for, um, where's the heading about what we subscribe to? We had to have that done by a certain day?
Oh, it was a membership dues?
Yeah.
Right there, membership dues.
Where, where, where?
Right there.
Okay, where is that on the new one?
Um.
Make sure that's there before we do it.
Well, is it out there, yep.
Uh, it would probably be on your, I know that your website, your page specifically talks about Naco.
Would it be part of?
No.
It's not part of your page? You got a picture up there now, Kelly?
It's a nice picture.
It's five years old, but it's.
Mine's ten.
Yeah, this isn't a county clerk thing, this is a county thing.
Do you wanna look?
See if it's the, we'll, we'll look, help me remember to look for that.
Look for it and then if we need to get it added to there, we can get it added before we launch the new website. Yeah.
Anyone opposed to doing it, uh, have them go ahead with it?
That's nice.
No, let's do it.
Look forward with it.
Before it's twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's time you move ahead.
Really appreciate it.
But it, it turned out really, really well, so.
Anything else then, Heather?
I don't have anything else. Tyler, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah. I received some really good news this morning from, uh, APCO. If you remember earlier when Cindy was putting on her presentation, she had mentioned, APCO, NINA, they're the national standards for industry, APCO is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. And they informed us that our training program here has been, uh, now duly accredited and recognized as up to the APCO P thirty-three standard. And it'll be one of, uh, a little over a hundred, uh, piece apps that have that accreditation in the entire country. Will be, uh, honored and, uh, receive our award and accreditation, uh, hardware at the National Conference in Baltimore, uh, this coming June. There's a lot of work put into that and, uh, we're very proud of it and proud of the training that we do. That's why everybody's been successful in, uh, in our training and we don't have a whole lot of mistakes, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Phil?
We, uh, discussed the no parking on county roads and, um, reviewing the statutes, we have to get into the ordinance business to have a prohibition on parking and, and traffic control, things like that. So in the next, uh, meeting or two, I'll visit with Kelly to process for that and I tell him to do so that the county attorney can afford.
Does that require public hearings, Phil?
It requires some notice, um, about it, um, and it could be public hearings, but we're gonna get, I'll, I'll lay out a cheat sheet for Kelly so that when an ordinance issue comes up, she'll know that these are the steps that have to be done. And it may take a month, several meetings to get her completely adopted. You know, at the city, you, you waive reading at three, on three occasions or, or not and then you have to publish your ordinance, uh, word for word in the minutes and things like that, so. Conferred with, uh, Dave to make sure he agrees that that's the process we need to follow so they can be enforced. So just an update.
Okay. Anything else from you? I have a question for you and that's, um, so I know you're re, planning on retiring, uh, at the end of the year. And so will you start to, I don't know if you, your office has decided who's gonna be the person that comes?
Yeah, I'm with Jason Ocean.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, Jason will be here at the next meeting.
That's what I was.
So that you can hold a medium.
Good.
And if you need to visit with us, um, one-on-one, we can do that. And I may spill over into January because we've got the wind regulations coming and attend, uh, some January meetings, so we'll see how that goes.
That's what I wanted to, the two of you might be here for a meeting or two or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, you have a, we have our meet, our employee appreciation banquet, which I believe everybody's signed up for that's in this room.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, eleven-thirty, one o'clock. And I had a meeting with Kaplan the other day. Kim and I went over and talked to the three women, they'll, they're very receptive. I believe it's coming up at the Kaplan meeting tomorrow, Ken, their meeting?
Yes.
Is tomorrow that they can officially sign our memorandum. They were planning to take over business today, but we ob, obviously have a little bit of a transition that needs to happen. So, anyway, I'm pleased that they're very excited to take on our business, so. And no questions on our rate.
And then, um, so that information talked about our rate and then, um, did that also talk about how much money was available from us?
Well, that's what I gotta put together too for them, so.
Because there's, I mean, surely there's a, an amount.
Where we're gonna start and saying, that's where we thought we'd give them a, give them the amount upfront, but no, we're not gonna do that. They're gonna give us quarterly statements, quarterly reports and then we'll pay them back from using our Keno dollars that we have.
So maybe it actually be less than what we budgeted before.
Potentially. And I, I mean, I've been doing this for November, we didn't have one funeral, but then they might have four in December and that's what I gotta get, that transition.
But surely we would have at some point in time, again, a limit. It seems to me that we oughta say, we're gonna give you this much money and, um, and then when that's done, that's done and we're done.
We have a budget, but if you recall, I came to you the last two years, we had a budget and we ran out of funds like in February because the need became a lot greater. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out with their system because they, they have a lot different expectations of the people who come and out, request assistance than I think we did, so.
And we brought it up the last time, they have other funds that they draw from also.
Well, exactly.
Besides just ours, so, you know, those, those numbers may, may not change that much.
And isn't there a couple of the things that, um, we by statute have to kinda, and I'm thinking about the burials.
Yep.
Isn't that something that's by statute that we have to kinda take care of?
We, and they can do it on our behalf.
Right.
But yes.
But those, it seems to me that those by themselves would have to be something that we, we've gotta be willing to provide at least that much money.
Well, but like, say, it could be, yeah, but they can do, we, it's not, we don't necessarily have to do it.
I understand.
We can have a representative to do it.
They do it, but we would have to provide enough money to do it.
Tell me on your, your theory on this, we had like a ninety thousand dollar budget set for emergency relief aid, okay? Of which what we set aside for salaries isn't gonna happen. So do I still get up to ninety thousand that I can tell, promise to them or just the difference of what we spent to here? See what I'm saying?
Right, and I think, I think we need to maybe look at that and as an agenda item, I'm assuming Mr. Kelly would suggest.
Doing a lot of talking for just the reports.
Right, so that, I think that maybe we should look at that, but I guess that was my concern in the whole thing was that surely our intention was that the overall expense was going to hopefully be the same or less, but certainly not greater than. And so that's what I wanna talk about, I guess, at some point.
We'll be, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Should, al, ultimately it should be less with the expense of the person.
Combined expenses.
Right.
You would think, but what we don't pay in office supplies can now give somebody another tank of gas.
Okay, so my, I, we can put it on the, as an agenda item, maybe the next time or the next meeting and discuss it. Okay, did you have anything else, Lisa, that you wanna talk about?
Not that I can think of. Oh, hey, um, if you're signing up for insurance benefits, we gotta get your paperwork in if you're gonna stay on our health plan. Okay, that, that HSA and.
Does that count for, for the dental and the, and the vision also?
Yes, HSA you would need to, yes, well, you know, not, not vision, not necessarily dental, but it's def, definitely. It wouldn't hurt you to fill out another page for the dental, so it's confusing. But for sure the health and the HSA. And I'm gonna say the dental too, RCI, anything RCI. I just changed my tune.
Okay. Russ?
Okay, I had a airport board meeting last Wednesday, nothing more than just airport business, uh, Sears House, same way they're still, like everyone else, struggling for funds, you know, trying to keep that thing afloat. We had two foreman meetings this month, I had missed one, I was out of town on a concrete job. County road bridge is gonna, our county road M bridge to open this week, should be all completed and open and passable by the end of the week. Uh, demo started on South Broadway Bridge, it's a two hundred and twenty day project, so, two hundred and eight day, so it's gonna be discomfort for a while, but by the time it's done, everybody will be used to not using it.
That's right. Okay, is that it?
That's all I have.
Well, I completed my bowling training, it was really good training, awesome. I attend, I'll have a meeting Friday with Randy Meineger and Kevin Spencer and Tim Coffin from Gearing and Robert Crowder. Uh, we're in the process of planning a big, uh, community-wide event next year, using, uh, the services of emergency management to help plan the safety aspect. We'll talk about that more later as it comes into frutation. I also have nine-one-one director interviews coming up Thursday. Uh, I attended Ashley Goingaway get-together at the county. I attended a funeral for a moral firefighter, she's also an EMT, she's also a cert member. I attended the Nebraska Department of Transportation meeting on the four-way project east of Minotair, that was very informative. And then today I finalized, uh, animal welfare issued, uh, the sheriff's department handled and that's about it.
I also attended the DOT meeting, uh, that was a week ago, Wednesday, I think, or this past Wednesday. And I thought the meeting went well. I didn't think we, that they had hardly any irate cut, uh, people there. Um, I thought it went smoothly and I thought they did a good job of presenting it. And, um, so, um, the, the project is s- s- certainly on a track of, um, continuing and, um, I believe the construction date was, um, was it twenty-six?
Yeah.
That they would start construction. They'll be working on, um, right-ofways and purchasing properties and all of those kinds of things over the next twelve months or so. So, um, we should be aware of that and we all know, I think, that it's on the north side is the new lanes that will be put in. So, anyway, I thought it went, went well. Um, one of the other things I wanted to be sure and mention, the, um, our list of committees that we serve on and then on the backside is the, um, board liaison, board positions of who's who, I call it supervision, um, Kelly doesn't. So liaison, we're gonna call it for Kelly's purposes.
Well, let's change the heading.
Anyway, my point is this sheet, the last time we did it, what I remember was that we went through that at the, a meeting prior to the first meeting in January. And, um, we actually even came in, I think, an hour early, we talked about it and, um, and then we were, had pretty much made those decisions so that the, the following meeting, that we could simply adopt it after the transition was made. So, um, are we on the same thought process there?
That's the way to do it.
So that would mean, the way I see it, that we either need to, did we set up like a, a, uh, separate meeting?
No, we did, we did it prior to it.
We made it, we, we made it, uh,
We came in, we came in early.
Changed our meeting to, instead of four-thirty, we changed it to three-thirty.
We, yeah, we had basically had a work session for an hour and.
And then we did a work session for an hour on that subject. And then we, at, by four-thirty, then the intent was to start the regular meeting.
Actually, I started a work session at three-thirty and then right after that on the same agenda, right or wrong, I did general meeting convenes at four-thirty.
Right, I think that's.
Like with the hope that you guys would get done early and we'd have a little bit of break, but it didn't happen, it ran into the other, I'm sure.
Okay.
So you published a notice to start at three-thirty.
So i- if that's okay with everybody, I think that's a good way to do it.
If you just send a reminder, Kelly.
I suppose that it'd work for me. I finally got the election wrapped up, so.
Good. Okay, well then let's try and do that, so that would be before the next meeting, which is two weeks from today, right? Sixteen. Okay. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I'll give you a heads up on, uh, on that. Kaplan, I'm not going to be able to take, uh, I've got another conflict and it's becoming more and more important that I attend that on that Tuesday night that they meet.
Okay.
So somebody needs to be thinking and I, I'm fine with taking on another committee or another board somewhere else. Somebody wants to switch or whatever the case might be, I'm fine with that. But I'm not going, I'm not going to be able to continue on the Kaplan board. So we just wanna make sure, all of, uh, all of our meetings were last week, two weeks ago and we're not meeting in November or in, uh, December, so there'll be no, the only meeting I have is Kaplan, which is tomorrow night. So that's, that's all we, yeah.
I know we're gonna have the same people, um, and so I know several of you are, um, pretty adept at the, um, committees you're on, but if you have some kind of, uh, uh, issue like, uh, Ken has here where he needs to step away from one of them, uh, and if someone says, hey, I'd really like to serve on one, um, we can work that stuff out at that meeting.
That's why I'm giving you the notes now, so you'll be thinking about it.
That's good.
Good idea.
I think I would be happy to serve on that one, but I don't think they'll let me for the same reason I couldn't serve on Housing Authority. You know, we get.
Too much interest in there.
We get a fifteen thousand a month on rents from Kaplan and I, I don't think they'd let me serve, so. Our company does. Okay? Um, but we need to all be thinking about that. Okay, well, we'll plan on doing that, starting an hour early then, Ms. Kelly?
I'm just typing myself an email, yeah.
All right.
A, a three-thirty start on the sixteenth.
With the first hour being?
To get ready for a reorganizational meeting, whatever day that might be, okay.
Okay. Charlie or Ken, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Charlie?
Uh, TCD is on December twelfth and it starts at four PM. Um, if, uh, Ken or Mark could also come along, I think it'd be great. We're gonna see a presentation for, presentation from this tracer AI that presented at, uh, Tourism. Tremendous, tremendous economic development tool. Would really like to be able to, um, have you guys see it, that presentation, um.
What time?
Uh, four PM, December twelfth.
I'll check my calendar.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm really hoping to get some buy-in from Tourism, Chamber. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm really hoping to get some buy-in from Tourism, Chamber, TCD. Um, possibly the City of Scottsbluff and the City of Gearing. Um, to help us purchase the tool. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna provide. I mean, the, the, the information is, isn't, there's, is limitless, uh, the information that I can provide, so, um. Anyone else interested, um?
Send something out if you would, I've, I'm trying to get it on my calendar here, but.
Okay. I'll send it, I'll, yeah, I'll send you a text.
That's fine.
And, but I guess just to coordinate between you and Mark and who's gonna go, so there's not three of us there.
It, it doesn't matter, Mark, if you wanna go, that's fine, I'm not, I'll try to make it.
Let me look at my calendar, but I'm happy if you can make it.
Yeah, but that's. I'm op- I'm open that day right now, that doesn't mean that we'll.
Okay. Let's kind of assume that, but I'll look at my calendar and see.
Um. And then Tourism meets again for the, uh, final time as a monthly meeting this month. Um, and then we'll be going to a, um, quarterly meeting schedule. Moving forward. We, we do have two applications in for new board members from the sports industries. And I'm still looking for that, uh, hotel application, so.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, um, legislation, is there anything on that from anybody, but Charlie, you're always kinda the.
Um, I did hear that there's, uh. You know, this, this bill to make up for the difference of the, the gap, I guess we call it, on the property tax, um, credit. Um, I guess LB thirty-four kinda created a, um, a year where people aren't gonna get their credit. Because we paid taxes in arrears and this new tax is already being credited on, on this year's tax statements, there's actually a gap year there, um, so. Um. It'll be interesting to see which senator carries that forward, um.
Committee hearing starts on January eighth.
Oh, gosh.
So.
No, we did.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand that exactly. So these tax statements that are coming out, Ken said his was down a thousand, so he's gonna get that thousand. And, um, when he fills out his income tax. For twenty-four. He's not gonna get a credit in twenty-five, he got it on his tax statement. So that should be.
Yeah, but when he getting his twenty-three, when he's getting on property taxes twenty-three and his twenty-four income tax, he should get those.
Right. Now, oh, okay.
Oh, your income taxes, your income taxes off, 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 is that right?
We're paying it.
I don't know.
You're the bookkeeper. It's a little confusing, we're getting, we're getting the credit off of the, off of the taxes that we're not going to pay. As far as property tax is concerned.
Yeah, but it's twenty-four. These tax statements we're getting is twenty-four tax payable in twenty-five.
Income.
But you're getting it, you're getting that credit. When you get that tax statement in your hand tomorrow, you've basically got the credit.
Yeah, I got it today, so it's.
And you, you will get it on your income tax too.
And you won't get it on your income tax in twenty-five, I mean, twenty-four's taxed.
That's correct. That's correct.
Right, that you file in twenty-five.
No, you won't.
And so it doesn't, it doesn't look to me like there's a gap.
But, but that's, but that's a twenty-three tax, that's a twenty-three tax.
How's that a gap?
It kinda depends on how you, so like if you got your tax, if you got your tax statement last year. And you paid it in December, you would have gotten the tax credit in twenty-four. But if you didn't pay your taxes until this year. Because, you know, you can without any penalty, so then you can't claim it on your income taxes. So you're, so you're not getting it for the taxes that you paid this year.
It's a year in the rear.
Yeah.
With that tax statement, my taxes now would be in twenty-five.
Right, but, but there are a lot of people that, like, we've already taken payments. We had payments waiting for us when we came in, because there are people that pay them as soon as they get them, so. So they're gonna be fine, but if you pay your taxes, like, like if I pay my taxes in April, I can't claim that on my income taxes next year, so. So it, there's some off in that, and that's what Charlie's talking about, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I. If they pay it in.
December.
December, then that, I might be able to understand that.
But if, but if you don't pay it until April.
How many people paid in December, ten percent or less?
Um, no, there's a fair amount, I mean, December's probably, it's probably our third highest collection month.
But your, your payment that you're making in August would be the last one, cause your twenty-three, your twenty-three taxes, and this one now starts for the twenty-five, so that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We'll, we'll still get it here.
Yeah.
You're still, whether you pay in December or January, you're paying twenty-four tax.
Within a year, yeah.
Right. Yeah, but it's, it's how you can claim it on your income tax.
Because they're doing it early to claim it on twenty-four.
And it, it doesn't matter on your federal tax, but there've been a lot of people that, um, got a better tax credit on their state income tax. And that, that credit on your state income tax is not gonna be there. When you file in April.
It's true, yeah, if you pay, pay that tax in December.
Mm-hmm.
On your federal tax, you're gonna have a credit.
Right.
And then, yeah, okay, I can see where there could be a little issue, and that's what you're talking about, Charlie.
Okay.
Alright. We'll see how that pans out, so to speak.
Um, one other announcement, uh, Scottsbluff has a new mayor, as of tonight.
Really?
Really?
Are real?
Who is it?
I just found out.
Who is it? I don't know.
Betsy Vidlec.
Really? She wasn't going off, then, she's still in next year. Did Jeannie step down, do we know?
I, it sounds like it was a.
They had their.
Interesting vote.
I think they, didn't they have their reorganizational meeting today?
Tonight, yeah.
Oh.
And so then they're voted on by the, by the board, nominated and voted on, so.
Right.
Oh, no wonder the press is gone. Yes.
Okay, anything else? Um, so I think that takes us all the way down to the executive session item to discuss pending or threatened litigation. And, um, I would move pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten. Of the reissue of the revised statutes known as the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. That the board hold a closed session with Phil Kelly, Lisa Ryan, Heather Hostchild. And the board for the purpose of discussion of pending lit- litigation. I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest. And that executive session for pending litigation matters is clearly authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Call second.
So we have a motion and a second to go in the executive session?
Where are you going?
Um.
Nobody else is here?
We can stay right here.
Okay.
We'll just close the door.
Yeah, we could stay here.
Shut the equipment off.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
And shut the, okay, so we have a motion, we're mo- we're voting if we could?
Motion.
Okay, I'm getting kicked out of this room right now.
Uh, I mean, we could.
You gotta move, Charlie.
My computer's up here, so I can't work downstairs.
Oh.
We can go.
Well, we can go in there, we can go in there, yeah.
I'm just checking.
Can we just go in there?
Charlie, I need to.
Let's, let's, it's alright. I don't think we've addressed that sound issue, but that's.
I don't think anybody's over there tonight.
I think it's made up issue, people can't hear me.
So you got your.
Yeah, probably, they can hear them.
Motion's carried, we're going in there, the time is seven-thirty-seven.
Yeah, I just don't really think it's a big thing, Russ, but, cause I can't understand what words, what they're saying.
Can't let you. And Lisa.
Okay, should we call you?
No, I'm starting recording, so I was just gonna.
Oh. Okay, um, we're back, the time is seven-fifty-eight. Do we need to call roll?
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Yes.
Raisig?
Here.
Lou?
Here.
We're back from executive session, any comments? Hearing no other, um, business?
No action to be taken.
And no action? Um, meeting's adjourned.
Good night.
Thanks.
See you guys.
Good night. Or so.
Yeah.